Ready? Good evening. This meeting of the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission will come to order. It's 6:02 PM on Wednesday, August 3rd. Because of the size of the room, we're going to have a little bit of adjusting of the sound here. Want us to give you a minute, Buck? Okay, all right. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for spending your Wednesday evening with us. Tuesday, I'm sorry, your Tuesday evening with us. If you have any difficulty hearing at any point, if you would please raise your hand, that would be helpful. In order to comply with federal law, we have a translator here with us. His name is Carlos Reyes. So I would ask Mr. Reyes to come up.
Buenas tardes, damas y comisionados, damas y caballeros. De acuerdo con la Ley de los Derechos Electorales, un traductor e intérprete estará disponible en todas las reuniones de audiencia pública a fin de proporcionar la traducción e interpretación que pueda ser necesaria para los ciudadanos que necesiten servicios de traducción o interpretación. Por favor comuníquese conmigo para que yo le pueda ayudar. ¿Habrá alguna persona que necesite la asistencia de un intérprete? Si lo hay, por favor levante la mano.
I think we're good, Commissioner?
Thank you. My name is Linda McNulty. I'm a member of the Arizona Redistricting Commission. To my right is Commissioner Rick Sturz. To his right is our legal counsel, Joe Kanefield. To my left is Corinne Bealock. Sorry, this is Corinne's first meeting with us from Strategic Telemetry. To her left is Ken Strazma from Strategic Telemetry. Over here managing everything is Buck Forst, who is coordinating the live stream. So everything that we say is being streamed out on the web. If you would make sure when you come up to the microphone to speak very directly into the mic. If you need help adjusting it, Buck will help you. Buck, does that come off if necessary? Okay. And you can just pull that off if you need to in order to speak into it. We have a court reporter here who will transcribe everything this evening. His name is Marty Herter. He's with us a lot. He does a fabulous job, and it'll be important to speak clearly, to state your name when you come up to the microphone, and to spell your name clearly for the record. Thank you. We have request-to-speak forms in the back. Christina, are you? Christina Gomez is our Assistant Executive Director, and she just walked into the back of the room there. She will be gathering the request-to-speak forms and bringing them up to us. If you would rather not speak but would like to submit written comments, I believe we have forms of a different color for that purpose, and Christina can provide those to you. We also have a website where you can submit comments, which we will tell you a little more about in just a minute here. Have I omitted anything that we need to say to start with? Don't think so. Okay. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Corinne and Ken, and they are going to begin with an overview of this redistricting process for you, and then we'll proceed with comments.
Good evening. I'm Corinne Kabina Bealock with Strategic Telemetry. I'm happy to be here tonight in South Tucson for the first round of public hearings to discuss the Arizona redistricting process. The goal of these meetings is to hear comments from you about the redistricting process, so thank you for taking the time to attend. The meeting, this meeting tonight, is one of 15 in the first round of public hearings. There will be a second round of hearings once a draft of the map is published. Before I begin, I also wanted to highlight the two forms, the yellow form in the back and then the blue form as well if you wouldn't like to speak tonight but you would like your comments recorded for us. So now to the presentation. Wanted to just start with a brief overview of what I'll discuss tonight. The first point we'll cover is why do we have a redistricting commission? The second point, what is redistricting? Third, what is the difference between redistricting and reapportionment? Four, why do we have to redistrict? Five, what guidelines need to be followed when drawing new districts? Six, what are the steps in the redistricting process? And seven, how can the public submit their input to the AIRC? So to start, why do we have a redistricting commission? This is the second time in Arizona's, this is the second time in Arizona's that Arizona's districts will be redrawn by the Arizona Redistricting, Independent Redistricting Commission. In 2000, when Arizona voters approved Proposition 106, they created the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission and established the process and criteria for drawing the new district lines. The commission is made up of two Democrats, two Republicans, and an independent chair elected by the other commissioners. The fifth member shall not be registered with any party already represented on the commission. The 2011 AIRC members are as follows. Scott Freeman, Vice Chair, Republican from Maricopa County. Jose Herrera, Vice Chair, Democrat from Maricopa County. Colleen Mathis, Chair, Independent from Pima County. Linda McNulty, Democrat from Pima County. And Richard Sturz, Republican from Pima County. So on to what is redistricting and the basic definition. Redistricting is the process of redrawing congressional and legislative district lines. What is the difference between redistricting and reapportionment? The two terms are often used interchangeably, but technically there is a difference. Reapportionment is the process of allocating congressional districts among the states based on changes in population. Because of the population growth over the last decade, Arizona was allocated an additional congressional district after the 2010 census, going from eight seats to nine seats. And redistricting is the process of drawing the actual boundaries of the district. So why do we have to redistrict? Well, because, I touched on this, but because Arizona gained a congressional district, new lines will have to be drawn to add the new district. Even if Arizona had not gained the district, a congressional legislative district lines would have to be redrawn to account for changes in population. The concept of one person, one vote dictates that there should be as close to the same number of people per district as possible. Because the rate of population growth is different in different areas, the existing districts now have different populations. So what guidelines or criteria need to be followed when drawing new districts? A, they must comply with the U.S. Constitution and the Voting Rights Act. B, they must have equal population. So criteria A and B are federally mandated, and all plans must satisfy those two criteria. C, the districts must be compact and contiguous. D, they must respect communities of interest. E, they must use visible geographic features, city, town, and county boundaries, and undivided census tracts. And F, create competitive districts where doing so does not create a significant detriment to other goals. So just a little bit about the actual redistricting process. Public hearings like this one tonight are being held all over the state to collect input, and in some states, the previous plans are used as a starting point for the new plans. However, this is not the case in Arizona. In Arizona, the starting point is a grid map per Proposition 106. The commencement of the mapping process for both the congressional and legislative districts shall be the creation of equal population in a grid-like pattern across the state. The initial grid map will likely only meet Criteria B and C, however, meaning equal population and compact and contiguous. So from there, adjusting the grid map, we'll need to adjust the grid map to meet the other criteria that we touched on. A, the Voting Rights Act. Arizona's congressional and legislative districts must receive preclearance or approval from the Department of Justice or a federal court under Section 4 of the Voting Rights Act before they can take effect. To get preclearance, Arizona must demonstrate that the new districts do not discriminate against minority voters in purpose or effect, which means there can be no intentional or accidental discrimination. Under Section 5, Arizona's redistricting plans cannot be retrogressive. The plans cannot weaken or reduce minority voters' rights. The presence of discrimination can be determined by analyzing population data and election results. The process continues adjusting the grid map according to the other criteria we discussed, those being the equal population, the districts must be compact and contiguous, and respect for communities of interest. One of the goals of these AIRC public hearings is to solicit input about the communities of interest, and in doing so through the forms that we discussed is the one way to do it. We'll discuss more about that in a little bit. So the process continued with adjusting the grid map to use visible geographic features, county boundaries, cities and towns, and census tracts. And usually census geography follows visible features. And finally, create competitive districts where doing so does not create a significant detriment to other goals. So finally, the AIRC wants to hear your input. You can fill out a request-to-speak form at a public hearing and provide the commission with your input. Examples of input might be your thoughts on criteria, communities of interest, or anything else about redistricting. And you can speak tonight at the hearing using the yellow form that we discussed, or submit your input using one of the blue forms. Both are also available on the AIRC website. And all, finally, you can visit us at www.a-z-redistricting.org or call 602-542-5221. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Corinne. Okay, let's begin with public comment. We have a lot of folks to hear from tonight. Thank you, Christina. We're going to limit our comments to approximately three minutes each, based on the number of speaker forms that we have here. As you can see, we've got quite a stack, and we have more coming in, and I don't want to keep everyone here all night. So Buck is going to, he has a little thing that beeps, and when you hear that beep, please finish up. I will call three names so that you know who's coming after the speaker. If you could be ready to come up, I don't see a place where you can easily come up and stand, but maybe if you can come towards the front of the room, and that will help things move along a little bit more quickly. And of course, if it's a very quiet group, this is great. If we can be very quiet while everyone is speaking, that will help with the live stream. It will help Marty hear, and it will help us all hear one another. So I'd like to begin with the Honorable Senator Olivia Cahero Bedford. Good evening, Senator.
Thank you. Members of the Redistricting Commission, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Olivia Cahero Bedford.
Hold on a second. I think that mic is not working. Let's let Buck fix it.
Sure.
If you begin by spelling your name.
Certainly. My name is Olivia Cahero Bedford. Thank you. Well, members, thank you of the Redistricting Commission. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I have been the state senator since, of this district, 27, since November. This is my ninth year of service. I served for eight years in the House of Representatives. As you know, District 27 is a majority-minority district, and is comprised mostly of central and western Tucson, including the area around the University of Arizona campus and the university medical complex. After the 2010 census, the district had a total population of approximately 200,000 people. That is just short of the 213,000 people needed to make an ideal district. Central and western Tucson is a community of interest that includes the University of Arizona with all the student housing in the neighborhoods to the west of the campus. Both have high Hispanic concentrations and similar demographics. And on behalf of myself and the residents of the district, I would ask that this commission seek to keep the core of District 27 the same as it exists today. I'd like to leave you copies of my comments today, and again, I thank you for allowing me to speak. Thanks for what you're doing.
Thank you very much. Next, the Honorable Representative Sally Ann Gonzalez.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak also, and I thank you for your service to, for the state, the citizens of Arizona. I'd like to echo, and again, let me state my name, Sally Ann Gonzalez, for the record. I want to echo the comments that Olivia Cahero, Senator Cahero Bedford, just said, and just add that, that in, from '96 to 2000, I served in the old District 10, which we are in today, this area, which is now basically District 29. And it used to be that the Yaki community was split up into District 13 and 10 at that time, and now it's 27 and 29. And I'd like for, I really would like to speak to trying to keep the Yaki community together. I am a member of the Pasquayaki tribe, and it, you know, we, we obviously have been able to elect a Yaki person to the state, represented, to the state, to represent not only the Yakis but everybody in District 27. And I'd like for, I really just echo the same comments that Senator Cahero Bedford just said. So I thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other elected officials from the State Senate Legislature or from the city of South Tucson here that I've overlooked that would like to speak? Okay, thank you. We'll move ahead now. Our next speaker will be former city of Tucson Councilwoman Carol West, followed by Mr. Alex Hakome, followed by Luis Gonzalez.
Thank you for holding this hearing this evening. My name is Carol, C-A-R-O-L-W-West, W-E-S-T. I know that some of these hearings have been quite rancorous, and I want you to know that I appreciate the fact that you are holding hearings around and the fact that this redistricting process is going forward. I know it hasn't been easy. But what I'm here tonight to talk about is competitive districts. I know that's far down the list, but independents have now surpassed Democrats in voter registration numbers in Arizona. Do registered independents have a role to play in this redistricting process? Currently, only a few districts in Arizona are close enough in party registration for independents to make much of a difference in the results of a general election. A greater number of competitive districts are vital for all voters to be heard, including independents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hakome?
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Are we working? Thank you, sir. My name is Alex Hakome. That's A-L-E-X-J-A-C-O-E-B. My family and I have been around Tucson and southern Arizona longer than dirt. About 15, 16 years ago, my wife and I built a house in Sawarita, as the rural life has always appealed to us. The first time I was on a horse, I think I was six months old. We maintained horses on River Road east of Pontotac, and it was not paved. I grew up on Campbell and Lee, right cross street, University Hospital where it is now, when it was two lanes, dirt shoulders, no sidewalks. After a stint in the Marine Corps, I bought three and a third acres south of Ina and Oracle. It was rural at the time. We had horses, and we rode Pima Canyon. Tucson just kept growing, and our desert just kept shrinking. My point is that Tucson, I knew, outgrew us. We enjoy the stars at night, the unsophisticated life, and the amenities offered in a more relaxed atmosphere. As a result, pardon me, the world revolves around Sawarita, Cromer de Tucson, Vale, colossal Cave, Benson, St. David, Sierra Vista, and other points east and south. I served as Chair of the Sawarita Economic Development Commission for eight years, chaired the Sister Cities Commission for 26 years, and have been heavily involved in civic affairs. I found that there is more shared in common with the rural communities in southeast Arizona. I was surprised to find that Sierra Vista views Tucson the same way that Tucson views Phoenix, with suspicion. Perhaps with good reason. I presently serve on the Pima County and City of Tucson Board of Appeals, as well as the Board of Adjustment for the town of Sawarita. I'm retired from the Southern Arizona Home Builders Association, where I served as government liaison for Saba and dealt with most of the municipalities in southern Arizona. Therefore, I can speak with some experience and identify closer with the more rural areas than I do with Tucson. I presently serve as the Chair of the Pima County Joint Technical Education District. The canyons of Madera, Davidson, Carr, Ramsey call more to us than the canyons located in downtown or an area that is rapidly becoming known as Real Never. I would ask that this commission consider Sawarita Road and Houghton Road perhaps as axes, east and south, and possible, and leave Legislative District 30 and Congressional District 8 associated more with the rural areas of southern Arizona. We would rather steer clear of the intrigued politics and subterfuge for which the more metropolitan part of southern Arizona is known. Please do not move us further into Tucson than we presently are. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Luis Gonzalez, representing the Pasquayaki tribe, to be followed by Judith Alkai, or Alkine, Jerry Belenker, B-E-L-E-N-K-E-R, and Bill Daniels. Mr. Gonzalez, would you spell your name for Marty, please?
Luis Gonzalez, Luis, L-U-I-S, Gonzalez, G-O-N-Z-A-L-E-S. Just want to thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak in behalf of the redistricting. As Pasquayaki was mentioned a while ago, Pasquayaki is on District 27. We have five communities within this district, which is Old Pasco on Oracle and on Grant, another one just down the road here on 39th and 12th, another one on, another small community on 44th and, 44th and 16th, in the new Pasco Village. I'm also on behalf here, not only advocating for the district or maintenance of District 27, as in my position as one of the tribal council members for the 11 years, we also have representation in District 16 up in the Phoenix area, Maricopa County. And that's Crossroads, which is baseline and I-10. We have a small community out there, about 5,000 people. Pasquayaki membership now is the third largest within the state of the tribes, and we have a lot of our constituents out there, not only from here to Phoenix, but also all within the state. But I'm advocating in reference to the maintenance and what we have in District 27 and also District 16 up in the Phoenix area, Maricopa. Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Alkai or Alkine?
It's Alkire, for the record. It's Judith, J-U-D-I-T-H, Alkire, A-L-K-I-R-E. Good evening to all of you, and thanks for allowing us to speak, and thanks for being here. I am Judy Alkire, and I live in Canoa Ranch, a community on the southern edge of the unincorporated area known as Green Valley, Arizona. The natural boundaries of Green Valley would be considered as the Freeport-Moran mine properties to the west, Madera Canyon and Santa Rita Mountains to the east, and the community of Amado to the south. And our northern border is interwoven with the town of Saharita. It's interwoven together, sort of like a basket that's woven by the Tojota-odam Nation or by just the grip of the fingers of a warm handshake. And this symbolizes the community of interest between the town of Saharita and the area known as Green Valley. The boundaries of Saharita, the town of Saharita, would be considered Green Valley to the south, the Freeport-Moran mine properties to the west, Pima Mining Road and the lands of the Tojota-odam Nation to the north. And the eastern boundary will probably, over the next 10 years, grow farther east to possibly Highway 83, which connects I-10 with Sonoyta. I would like to ask the commission to consider all of these areas, and please not draw a map that's going to separate these two communities. Green Valley and Saharita are vital rural communities. We have a natural separation from the city of Tucson by the lands of the Tojota-odam Nation, and we both have retired families and families with young children. We share school districts, Continental School District, which serves children from K through eight as well, and they have students enrolled from both Green Valley and Saharita. Once these children graduate from Continental, they attend the other schools that are in the Saharita School District. The two communities include many other things. All of our medical is intertwined between the two communities, as well as our school district. The Chamber of Commerce is actually named the Saharita-Green Valley Chamber of Commerce. There is a Green County, Green Valley Community Foundation that was formed with input from both communities, and its objective is to serve both communities. Charity and volunteering to help each other are both priorities in these communities. The White Elephant Shop and this parade that happens in October every year, the White Elephant Parade, are things that just incorporate that entire area as one event that pulls us all together. The Rotary Club and other civic organizations are made up of people from both Saharita and Green Valley. The Green Valley Fire Department services residents in both areas. Our houses of worship are filled with people and families from both areas, and the large churches in Green Valley, their auditoriums serve as places for community cultural events. There's many, many more. And to the east and south of Tucson are the towns of Vale, Rita Ranch, and Corona de Tucson. These two are vital rural communities. Please keep this area in LD 30 and CD 8 together as they are today. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Belenker. Belenker, Belenker.
My wife says Belenker. I say Belenker. And so for this purpose, since my wife is in the audience, it's Belenker. My name is Jerry Belenker. I'm a resident of Green Valley, Arizona. For the past five and a half years, having come from Silver Spring, Maryland, virtually in the shadow of Washington, D.C. I was a government attorney and taught some college courses by way of background. I'm grateful for this opportunity. When we came to Arizona, we were struck by the openness of the area, and I think this is an example of openness for public communication, and we appreciate it very much. You all know the criteria of competitiveness and compactness and that sort of thing, so I don't have anything to bring for you. You know that. What I do hope, and I don't mean this to sound preachy, is that there is a genuine appreciation of the seriousness of the constitutionally mandated work that you are doing, and that this this work, although there's political representation in the organization, be done in as non-political a fashion as possible, so that the political system can then operate, but without any arbitrary or avoidable distortions that weigh one political group to the disadvantage of another, other than the will of the electorate. One vote per person is meaningless if the voting structure is not established so as to avoid any arbitrary or political distinctions that work to the detriment of the individual voters. The significant thing to me is that you are constitutionally mandated, and that rises to a very high level of significance, having been established by the state constitution. And therefore, we hope, and I have no reason to believe that you don't, have a full appreciation of how important your work is, especially that it has legs. It will last for 10 years until the next decennial census. Meaning no disrespect, after the commission is forgotten, or no longer discussed, the work that you do will reverberate and reverberate and reverberate for 10 years. And I just think that that has to be stressed consistently. This is not a transient, impermanent item. Your work cannot be overturned by the next legislature or anything of that sort. It has staying power. So with that in mind, I commend you for these open hearings, but that I have to say that in your official title, the word independent is the most important, and I think that that should be stressed. When your work is done, what's going to happen? You will be criticized, because no one can come up with a perfect electoral system. But perfection can be the enemy of the good. So even if you are criticized, if you know and we know that you did the best you could do, we will all be grateful. My time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's everyone try to keep it within three minutes, and we up here will let folks know when their time is up, and we will try and be fair to everyone. Thank you. Mr. Daniels, just before you begin, let me call Garland Cox, William, looks like M-A-H-L perhaps, and Ruth M-A-K-I. Please go ahead, Mr. Daniels, and spell your name for Marty.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. My name is Bill Daniels, B-I-L-L-D-A-N-I-E-L-S. I reside at 39633 South Horse Run Drive in Tucson, Arizona. I'm the chairperson of the Eagle Crest Ranch Community Homeowners Executive Advisory Committee. And in that capacity, I get an opportunity to meet a lot of the residents, a lot of the people that I see every single day, and this issue about redistricting has come up, and they're real concerned. I live in Pinal County, but if you look at my address, it says Tucson. My friends and neighbors also live in Pinal County, but their children go to school in Pima County, they shop in Pima County, they work in Pima County, they have fun in Pima County. And I'm concerned that all the residents that I've spoken to are equally concerned that when they vote for their state representative in the future, their vote will have no direct effect on the community that they live in, where they work, where they shop, where they play. We understand that there is a study that suggests that we should no longer be a voting member of our community of interest, which consists of Catalina, Oro Valley, Mariana, and Tucson, Marana, and Tucson, but be moved to a suburb of Phoenix. This would be a fatal blow to the residents of Eagle Crest Ranch. Our community, if you go up 77, right over the Pima County-Pinal County border resides Eagle Crest Ranch. We're just north of Catalina and just west of Saddle Brook. But if we were actually, but if we were told, if I had to tell my residents that they have more in common with Phoenix than they do with Tucson, they'd laugh me off the street. So I'm here to inform you today, madam, that we want to stay a part of our community of interest, which is Catalina, Oro Valley, Marana, and Tucson. I'm here to say, keep us in LD 26, don't disenfranchise us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, don't let me take your phones away. Everyone with cell phones, please shut them off, put them on mute. Thank you. Garland Cox.
Thank you. I am Garland Cox, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak. I retired to Tucson, Arizona in 1998 so that I could continue my passion for cycling on a year-round basis. My community of interest is determined by this desire to cycle on a 12-month basis. As such, I have located in the northeast quadrant of Tucson near Matt Lemon in proximity to the Catalina Highway, both of which offer broad bike ways on both sides of the roadways. My riding area extends from the top of Matt Lemon on the north, down the Catalina Highway, and on out along Houghton Road to Saharita Road, west to I-19, and south to Green Valley. Then I ride along the Spanish Trail east to Colossal Cave, over to Vale, on southeast to Sierra Vista, and on east to Cochise County. I also include the Tanca Verde Road east to Reddington Pass, the 49er Club Roads, the End of Speedway, Broadway, and all points accessible by roads in and around East Suoro Park East. I also include the Rita Ranch area and east and west along Irvington Road and Valencia Road. It is this variable terrain with its occasional shopping facilities and restaurants and convenience centers, low-density housing, semi-rural atmosphere, and lower traffic that I want to see maintained in our Legislative District 30. The cohesion of this cycling area and its community of interest seems to me to be important and should be perpetuated as a continuum. I also request that the City of Tucson be moved into the Congressional District 7 to make the Congressional District 8 a more rural district. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you spell your name for the court reporter, please?
I'm sorry, I don't know this Mall guy, but I'm William Mackey.
Oh, 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 okay.
I apologize for my penmanship as a casualty of the information age.
You need to do a little dot on the thing that looks like an L.
Right. My name is William Mackey, last name spelled M-A-K-I, and I'm representing myself. First of all, I would like to state my support for the citizen-driven redistricting process. Thanks to all of you for your work on this commission. If you stay the course, efforts of some individuals to undermine this constitutional process will not succeed, and the results of your work will have great credibility with the citizens of our state. I would like to share with you my personal concern. I retired to Green Valley in Pima County three years ago, after 35 years as a faculty member in state universities. My wife and I selected Arizona because of its wonderful climate, spectacular vistas, outstanding recreational opportunities, and a fine public university nearby. However, after taking up residence here, I discovered that my vote in state elections does not count for very much, if anything. I feel underrepresented and disenfranchised. I think you know that my residence is within LD 30. I regard LD 30 as the poster child of what not to do if you believe in the IRC criterion of competitiveness. I believe, for myself, that competitiveness is the single most important issue in drawing the map for three reasons. First, the voting public in this state breaks out roughly as 1/3, each Democrats, Republicans, and independents. The makeup of the state legislature should reflect that distribution, but at present, it does not even come close. Second, such non-competitiveness suppresses voting. If your vote cannot possibly make a difference, why vote at all? Third, non-competitiveness discourages responsiveness and encourages arrogance on the part of elected officials. Some representatives in our district dodge requests for interviews with the news media. Another prominent legislator is reported to have told a community leader that, quote, "We do not need you anymore," unquote, and both were actually of the same political party. If our legislators do not need us, the voting public, then they are free to pledge allegiance to out-of-state special interests, and accountability is irreparably lost. In sum, we need competitive districts in the interest of promoting fairness and equality. Non-competitiveness is an enemy of our democratic process. I encourage the commission to create competitive districts that respect proportions of registered voters and thereby ensure that each vote really counts. Then I will be truly happy to be in Arizona. Thank you for your attention and for the opportunity to provide my comments for the record.
I guess you should have been my tip-off.
I'm Ruth Mackey, R-U-T-H-M-A-K-I. I'm also from Green Valley, representing myself. I've lived here for a little over three years, having moved from Texas. I very much appreciate this redistricting process and the job that you are doing. Thank you for working hard to make this a fair and reasonable process. Redistricting in Texas is done by the legislature and is a totally political process. In my district in Texas, many voters felt disenfranchised. There was simply no reason to vote if you weren't voting for the predominant party. I was delighted to see that the people of Arizona had created this independent commission to produce fair voting districts. To me, competitiveness is the most important criterion for congressional and legislative districts. Voters should believe that their votes have a chance of being meaningful. If they do not, apathy occurs. People do not vote because it doesn't make any difference. If people don't vote, then they truly do make no difference. It becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy. People don't vote because it doesn't matter, and nothing ever changes because people don't vote. In creating the new districts, please draw the line so that all people feel that their vote has a potential to make a difference. Allow all people of the state of Arizona to believe that their vote matters, so citizens will be encouraged to vote and make their voices heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Arnold Erkin, who will be followed by Mary Louise Connell, Barbara Tellman, and
My name is Arnold Erkin, U-R-K-E-N is my last name. I'm a semi-retired academic and political scientist, and lived in Arizona for about four or five years. And I have some familiarity with the nuts and bolts of redistricting and the efforts to try to design competitive districts. And I'm not familiar with the history of the commission here in Arizona, but I urge you to, if you're going to make the process open, to do your best to divulge the ratings that you develop for the preferences of the parties for different designs of districts, so that in a kind of game theoretic model, that you allow each party to choose its most preferred design, and then look at alternatives in terms of the losses and gains that parties would derive from expected votes based on the past patterns of voting in those districts. I'm not aware that anybody does that, but I'm sure, based on what I know about what parties do when they study the district lines themselves, that that's what they do. They're looking for the best expected vote, the best expected gain, the minimum expected loss. And I think it would be good, in the spirit of independence, to make that kind of data available to the public, so we can see the criteria that are used to resolve the conflicts which are inevitable in trying to come up with a set of competitive districts. Thank you very much for your service and for letting me talk.
Thank you. Ms. Connell.
My name is Mary, M-A-R-Y, Lois, L-O-I-S, Connell, C-O-N-N-E-L-L. I'd like to express my appreciation to the commission for its service to the state of Arizona and to its people. It's really commendable what you're doing, and I hope that you do remain independent. I'd like to speak to competition and the importance of keeping the districts politically competitive. Competition assures that elected officials remain accountable to the electorate. If there is no competition, where the competition is so weak it is meaningless, then the general public is not heard. This is true even if the party in power is the party of the district's majority. If there are no viable alternatives, the interests and needs of even the political majority is secondary to the interests of the party power brokers. I am convinced of this regardless of party, Democrat, Republican, Green Party, Libertarian, or whatever. There must be both moral and ethical incentives to be responsible to all the electorate, not just the few. The only way to do that is with meaningful political competition. I'd like to address a community of interest as it has to do with the border with Mexico. There has been a suggestion to rearrange the districts so that the border with Mexico is made up of three, rather than the current two districts. I believe that would be counterproductive. With two districts that are spread from east to west, narrowly expanding to the north, the unique issues of border security are more easily addressed with two representatives more experienced in those challenges. Three districts would logically have to be narrowed east to west, then extended north. The additional issues of constituents in the northernmost part of the district would have to be addressed, diluting the attention and expertise of the representatives in dealing with the border issues. Two districts means two district teams, congressional representative, the staff, legal advisors, et cetera, that are coordinating efforts. Three districts increases the number by roughly 33%. I believe that becomes unwieldy. As a former project leader for a major corporation in the United States, I know the importance of having the right number of team members and supporting staff. Too few means too much work on each team member and not enough expertise. Too many participants jeopardizes team cohesion, increases the likelihood of turf wars, can lead to confusion over who does what. Creativity, problem-solving, conflict resolution, all suffer. Arizona has succeeded in bringing the illegal immigration and border issues to national attention. Please do not jeopardize the progress made by an ill-advised rearrangement. Finally, I would like to speak to inequality in population. I believe ethnic diversity must play a major role, and I understand that is part of the commission's requirement. Solutions come from hearing all the voices, not just the ones we like or agree with. Thank you for your time, and thank you for serving.
Thank you.
I'm Barbara Tellman, B-A-R-B-A-R-A, T-E-L-L-M-A-N. I want to strongly support the independence of this commission and the work of its independent chair, and I hope that it's not...
Pull the mic up just a little bit.
Strongly supporting the independence of the commission. You have many criteria that you have to follow, and I'd like to throw one more thing into the pot in order to achieve better equal population, and that is considering the prison populations. The laws governing the federal census require that everybody has to be counted where they're residing, and that means that prisoners are counted in the prisons. The prisoners are usually far away from their home, maybe from their state, and even from their country. The IRC has to use these numbers, and I'm submitting some information to you, the numbers in the prisons by minorities and by country of origin, as well as the population of the prisons in the state. An example, the Florence area has a population of about 17,000, with 2,800 households and 1,700 registered voters. More than 11,000 of the counted population are in the prisons in the Florence area. 64% of the prisoners in this state come from Maricopa County, and yet very few of them are housed there. Most are housed in Florence or elsewhere. A higher percentage of minorities are in prison than in the general population, and often much higher than in their surrounding communities. This leads to claims that we have higher minority representation in towns like, say, St. John's, Kingman, Florence, and so forth. In E... In Eloy, 37 percent of the prisoners are Mexican nationals, and yet they are counted as population for redistricting purposes. The Arizona constitution states, "For the purpose of voting, no person shall be deemed to have gained or lost residence by reason of being present or absent while confined in any public jail or prison." Delaware, Maryland, and New York have passed legislation to end prison gerrymandering, using similar clauses in their constitution. The town of Buckeye excludes the prison from its city districts entirely, and Pinal County completely ignores the prison count when drawing their supervisor districts. This keeps it much fairer. When the 2004 district boundaries were finalized for Arizona, the population deviations per CD ranged from minus two to plus two percent. If these numbers had been adjusted to account for the prison population, the actual deviation was minus seven to plus two percent, with District 23 having the greatest deviation, and that's Florence. Prison populations have grown, and new prisons have sprung up. Since we can't fairly apportion population using our present laws, what can we do about it? I suggest several things we can do to get around this. Pass legislation to deal with it next time, minimize the number of prisons in any one district, and use the allowance of a certain population deviation to go and try to make as fair as possible the difference between minority representation and the population in these prison areas. Thank you.
Thank you. If you want to give your information to Mr. Kanefield here. Susan Tanner, who will be followed by Mohur Sidwa, Tom McConnell, and Amy Johnson.
Good evening, Susan Tanner, S-U-S-A-N-T-A-N-N-E-R. I'm actually here as kind of a fact-finding mission. I've read some things on the web and blogs and accounts of some prior meetings, and so I wanted to hear more about the process and what my fellow citizens have to say. But I felt compelled to sign up to speak. In part of my research, I read your bios. I know each of you is very busy, longtime, full-time contributor in many other ways. And when I had kind of heard that there had been some disruption and maybe some people lobbying to disband this independent committee, I just wanted to express my personal thanks, and I'm hearing it from other members of the audience, for the work that you're doing and how important this is, and how great it is that Arizona has an independent redistricting commission. So, thank you very much, and you'll probably see me later in the week.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sidwa?
Last time I was here, one of the commissioners --
Spell your name, please, mister.
Oh, sorry. Yes. M-O-H-U-R, middle name Sarah, S-A-R-A-H, last name Sidwa, S-I-D-H-W-A. One of the commissioners that suggested last time that perhaps it might be better if we defined what competitiveness is, kept me awake two nights trying to figure it out. And basically, I would define a competitive district as one which has the ability to predict the outcome of the election, in which the ability to predict the outcome of the election is fairly low, and no party fails to field candidates on a regular basis. For example, in highly Democratic or Republican districts, the outcome is pretty predictable. In districts in which there are 33 each of Democrats, Republicans, and no party, the outcome is a toss-up. And then we have the most competitive districts, and I will give you some charts I put together. One measure of competitiveness is voter participation. In very non-competitive districts, voter participation, which means registration and turnout, is low for both parties. Why vote if the conclusion is obvious? And I have a chart that shows what I'm talking about. Where one party's registration is very high, voter turnout does tend to be very low. But if the two parties are relatively close, within maybe four or five percent, there is much more excitement, more people feel like their votes count, they are more vested in the political process, they're more vested in democracy itself. In other words, let's aim for real democracy and let's try to keep competitiveness going. Beyond that, we have two fine attorneys that you have, and perhaps case law might be a better guide than my throwing out numbers per se. But I would like to emphasize what the previous speaker said. Let's not count those who cannot vote because they're in jail or are not nationals. Let's not count them as minority populations. That's kind of cynical. Anyway, that's all I have to say. I would like to give the charts, and thank you very much for everything that you do.
Thank you. Mr. McConnell?
My name's Tom McConnell, T-O-M, M-C-C-O-N-N-E-L-L. I just wanted to comment on, we've heard some talk about the idea of keeping counties together and not splitting them between districts. And I noted that in the previous redistricting, we wound up with county and LD combinations of 55 combinations. Now, in theory, since there are 30 LDs required, the minimum you could get would be 30 if you simply could split each county. Obviously, population doesn't allow that. But I did draw a map, and I'm not recommending this particular map, just to show that it's feasible to draw such an arrangement with 46 combinations, which is 16 more than the absolute minimum. With congressional districts, there were 29 combinations now, and of course, there would be at least 15 since we have 15 counties, so that's 14 more than was absolutely needed. It's possible to redraw it so there are only eight more, and I've drawn some maps to support that. I've also compiled some statistics that I'd suggest we start looking at. The commission started looking at measures. How are you going to measure some of these variables? One of them that I think is very important is compactness. And I've looked, there are over 30 measures of compactness floating around out there. The one that seems to me the best fit is something like the RIAC number, which doesn't consider perimeter. Many of them involve calculations involving the perimeter of a district, which would be great if you were going to fence the district. But since that isn't the plan, that tends to devalue the role of natural boundaries, which you are also asked to look at in another criteria. So I would suggest something like RIAC that doesn't consider perimeter might be a better measure. My reason for suggesting that we avoid splitting counties is, first of all, counties in Arizona are responsible for all of the administration of elections, the counting of registered voters, and the actual apparatus of elections. The more LDs or CDs they have to deal with, the greater the complexity. This seems to be manageable in the large counties, which in any event will be some combination of districts. But in the rural counties, that imposes a significant burden in terms of administrative costs and everything else. The rural counties, given their budget constraints, have not been doing well at all of the duties that are imposed upon them now. So I think if they can be maintained so that they fall within a single congressional district or LD, that reduces complexity. There's another consideration, which is if an officer in the legislature has to leave office before the end of their term, the replacement is done by the Board of Supervisors of the predominant county. So any partial counties, then, are simply not included in that replacement process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Amy Johnson, followed by Frank Bergen, Diane Meyer, and Rebecca Laporto.
Good evening. My name is Amy Johnson, A-M-Y-J-O-H-N-S-O-N, and I am a relatively newcomer to Arizona. I moved here last year after I retired from Russell Investments in Washington State, where I had spent the last 18 years as a systems analyst. And I say that because I not only am surprised, when I came down here, that we have an independent process like this, that you take the time to listen to me, and because I have a faint glimmer of how much work this is. And if I was consulting with you, I would be saying, "You can't do this. You cannot take six criteria, many of them that are actually opposite to each other, and come up with something." This is really hard, and I really appreciate you not only taking the time, I know it's a lot of time, but to even take on the job. And I'm sure you know that nobody's going to be happy, right? I grew up in Chicago, Illinois. I was not a lifelong Democrat, however. I became a Democrat in 1960, listening to the debates, the presidential debates, and things leading up to those debates. And three years later, I was in high school at the time, but working part-time in an office, like a guidance office. And so we had to have a radio, and I was the first person in my school who knew about the shooting. There were a lot of things published at that time. There were a lot of images, you know, that probably most of us have about that time. But the one that has always stayed with me is a picture of John Kennedy in a hall in the White House, deep in conversation with Senator Everett Dirksen, and the article about how they worked together. Now, Senator Dirksen was, you know, the preeminent Republican, but they found ways to work together. And what I see happening now is people not working together. People in Congress, people at the state level, they just aren't listening to each other, and they're not working together. And I put my analytical brain together and say, "How could this happen?" And the one thing that made a whole bunch of sense to me was when someone said, "If you have a non-competitive district, what you have is a situation where the race is in the primary." And in the primary, if it's Republican, the candidates must out-Republican each other. If it's Democrat, the candidates have to out-Democrat each other. And so I look at us, okay, we are 10 years since the last redistricting, and we are so polarized. And so I think we all know what's just been happening the last few days, how close we were, and we're still going to see a lot of bad fallout in the financial markets over this, over what's been going on, where people can't come together and talk to each other because they are so opposite. I want my candidate, if my candidate doesn't win, I want the other candidate to still feel like they represent me. And so I think you have the opportunity here, and hopefully everyone is taking that opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Bergen?
I'm Frank Bergen. It's F-R-A-N-K-B-E-R-G-E-N. And I thank you both, commissioners, for being here and taking on the task you have taken on so graciously and to the benefit of all in the state. I'm just a little bit disappointed that Chair Mathis is not here because I'm particularly concerned to thank her and to praise her for the work that she is doing in spite of the stuff that I have heard from time to time in the newspapers and elsewhere. I'm a resident and have been for the last 15 years of the Tancaverdi Valley. I'm in Legislative District 30 and Congressional District 8. On my car, I have a bumper sticker which reads, "Driven by faith, not by fear." And I commend that message to you, commissioners, and to all here present. My concerns regarding the process with which we are all here gathered are basically concerns about competitiveness. And we've heard a lot about it, but I don't think that we can ever hear enough about The results of your work will profoundly affect not just the political, but the social and economic life of this state for 10 years and possibly quite a bit longer. As a result of the 2010 general election, our current legislature has supermajorities of Republicans, 21 in the Senate and 39 with a vacancy in the House. In the Senate races, Republican candidates took 57.6 percent of the votes for major-party candidates, and yet they won 70 percent of the seats. Ten senators and 12 House members were elected without major-party opposition. In 17 House districts, one or other major party fielded only one candidate, and only two of those standalone candidates were elected. I detect a serious imbalance, which I believe is largely due to the lack of concern for competitiveness on the part of the original redistricting commission. In 2010, another census was taken. A new commission has been established in accordance with this constitutional mandate, and you, the commissioners, have set about its work. And the commission is being challenged before it has even produced provisional maps by people driven by fear that it may not draw lines that will allow them to maintain their I'm driven here by faith that you, our independent redistricting commission, will not be bullied, will not be intimidated, but will produce legislative and congressional districts that are responsive to the mandates of the state constitution, and above all, districts that are competitive to the maximum extent possible. You are mandated to achieve a number of goals, none of which is unimportant. However, if you create districts of equal population that are compact and contiguous, that follow geographic features, that respect communities of interest, and pass muster with the Department of Justice, yet give us no more competitive legislative districts than we have today, I for one will be extremely disappointed. You can do it.
Thank you. Mr. Bergen, can you --
And I thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Before you go ahead, Ms. Meyer, let me just make the comment.
Oh, excuse me. I'm Rebecca Laporto.
Okay, all right. I think Diane Meyer is before you are. Yes. Thank you. I just want to let you know that we are live-streaming this, and although we're doing over 15 hearings all over the state, and the five of us have been sharing the job and moving around all over the state, most of us, when we're able to, are watching these hearings on the live stream, even if we aren't here. So your message for Chair Mathis, I'm sure, got to her. I expect she's watching, as are Vice Chair Freeman and Vice Chair Herrera. Please go ahead.
Thank you. My name's Diane Meyer, D-I-A-N-E-M-E-Y-E-R. I've lived in Arizona for five years. My husband and I moved here from the Washington DC area. First, I'd like to thank all of the commissioners for serving on this independent body. I know the time and hard work it takes to be a volunteer, but you are especially commended for doing this particular job because it's so important to the future of Arizona. I trust that this independent commission, not the state legislature that has a political agenda, will make the best decisions for our future. I have learned a lot from the hearing today, and glad that I came, and I'm heartened to have heard a lot of similar feelings and ideas to my own. What's most important to me is that I have a say in the election of my representatives. I work very hard locally and want to know that my vote will count. I want others to feel the same way so that everyone will want to participate in our democracy, rather than stay home because the results of the elections are predetermined. So competitive districts are, in fact, high on my list of the criteria that you're using to redistrict. I also believe that maintaining the integrity of communities of interest is important. I live in Green Valley and want my community of interest, which I agree includes Sarita, to stay whole. to stay whole. And finally, as it is currently the case, I believe that all districts statewide have a keen interest in the border, and because of the low population in that vast area along the border, I don't believe that there's any need to create more districts on the border. Thank you for allowing us to speak.
Thank you. Ms. Loporto, your turn.
My name's Rebecca Loporto, and I'm in District 26.
You'd spell your name.
First name's Rebecca, R-E-B-E-C-C-A. And I've lived in District 26 for about ten years. And I've lived in Arizona most of my life, and my great-grandmother pioneered into Arizona, into Cochise County. She was a cattle rancher and brought the family in here. Anyway, I live a mile and a half north of Ina and Thornidale, but have many interests in common with the people of Saddle Brook. For instance, my dentist lives in Saddle Brook, and his office is in Catalina, which is where I go for my appointments, and most of his patients are from Sun City, which is in Oral Also, I am retired, like most people, in Saddle Brook, and the area where I live is mostly tract housing, but we do have small acreages with mobile homes like they do in Catalina. So, I think we're, our district is a community of interest, and we all have common healthcare needs in hospitals, restaurants, the newspapers are the same, houses of worship attract people from the entire area, and our school districts are similar, so that I'm hoping that you'll keep District 26 together as it is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Julie Evans here? Okay, Julie, you're next, followed by a couple from Vail. Sam Maenpa, or Maenpa, and Ron Maenpa, I believe, sorry, followed by Donna Branch Gilby. Ms. Evans, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Julie Evans, J-U-L-I-E-E-V-A-N-S. Thank you, guys, first of all, for doing what you're doing and working so hard for our community and maintaining the democratic process in our state here. I'm a longtime resident of the east side of Tucson, far east, and I feel very much a part of the community of Tucson and central Tucson, where I grew up. I went to elementary, high school, and college, and lived a number of years, actually, here in Barrio Tucson. Southern Arizona has grown a lot, and it seems to me that keeping boundaries, the competitiveness boundaries, and keeping groups that have worked together well, keeping them together is very important to me. I'd like to see, you know, if a new district is being created, that beautiful northwest side that has grown so much seems like a no-brainer, and it would be minimal disruption to central and southern areas in groups that have worked together for a long time. That's pretty much what I want to say, and it would give all people and parties as close to an equal voice and an equal chance of being heard in their communities and by their votes. This is vital to maintaining the spirit of the proposition that you are working on and our communities and all the people that make up southern Arizona. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Sam Maenpa. First name, S-U-N, last name, M-A-E-N-P-A-A. I moved here from Sierra Vista approximately nine years ago. I initially lived in the area of Harrison Road and Golf Link.
If you could speak into the microphone a little more closely, please.
Start all over?
Talk in your biggest voice.
Okay. I moved here from Sierra Vista approximately nine years ago. I initially lived in the area of Harrison Road and Golf Link. Not a bad place to live, but we wanted something different. We wanted to live in a quiet rural area and have at least one acola. After looking around, we settled on a five-acre lot south of Coronade, Tucson. There are several military retiree and all veterans in the area. My husband is a military retiree. At the time we moved here, my daughter was still living with us, and we wanted to be in the best school district. The best school district being the best in the county was very attractive to us. I would like to see the city of Tucson move into CD seven. I don't believe the people of rural areas of Pima County have any common interest with the people of Tucson. Both Tucson and rural area deserve to be represented by like-minded individuals who will serve their interests. Eastern Pima County should continue to be part of CDA with Cochise County. I would like to see at least four congressional districts join our southern border with Mexico. With any luck, we will get at least one representative, maybe even two, who are vocal enough to get the attention of Congress and the President. I have friends in the Lira Ranch area and drive Houghton Road to both the visit and shopping Lira Ranch. My husband retired from Army at Puerto Juca and still have a friend in Cochise County. My daughter lives in Sierra Vista. I occasionally drive Saurida Road, Highway eighty-three, to visit in Cochise County. I attend church in Saurida and have many friends who live there. I travel Saurida Road to get there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Maenpa.
My name's Ron Maenpa. It's M-A-E-N-P-A-A. As my wife already said, we moved to Tucson about nine years ago, and we were looking for a rural, quiet area, and we settled on a five-acre lot south of Coronade, Tucson. I personally don't feel that there's much community of interest between the rural areas in this county and Tucson, and I'd like to see Tucson move into CD seven. And I'd also like to see CD eight currently as West Pima County and Cochise County stay together in CD eight. I'd like to see three or four districts along the border. That'll give us an additional voice or two in Congress, and hopefully, one of them would be loud enough to get the attention of Congress and/or the President to resolve some of the problems we have here. We go to church in Saurida, and we have the Saurida Corridor to get the church, and we have many friends in Saurida that we visit with. Also, the same thing with the Houghton Road Corridor in Lira Ranch, where we go quite often to visit and shop. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Branch Gilby, who will be followed by Miriam Lindmeyer, Bob Gilby, and Dee Pfeiffer.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Donna Branch Gilby. That's D-O-N-N-A, Branch, B-R-A-N-C-H hyphen G-I-L-B-Y. I've been a resident of Tucson for forty-five years. I live in Legislative District 27, and I appreciate the time that you are devoting to listen and allow us the opportunity to speak. I appreciate the value of the Constitution and the Voting Rights Act as the all-American guides for fair and representative district boundaries. I'm glad that they are first on the list. I wish to speak about competitive districts. We need competitive districts to engage voters. If there's no chance that my candidate could win, motivation to participate in any part of the political process is dampened, if not removed. This weakens our democratic system. What do I mean by competitive? I mean near equal numbers of voters of the major parties and parties without, voters without party affiliation, and where the election outcome is unpredictable. In calculating these numbers or in laying out the lines, I would urge you to consider the special case of prisoners. They are included in the census, but they don't vote, they don't participate in the election process. And so, I ask that new maps that you propose avoid allowing these populations to skew the composition of the district away from being really competitive. And with the numbers that you heard earlier, I can see how that could happen, but to really see what can be done to minimize that. One more comment on competitive districts. I believe that if legislative districts are competitive, it's more likely that legislators who truly represent the voters of their districts will be elected. Evidence that the current legislature doesn't represent or reflect the priorities of current Arizonans comes from a recent election, where the voters were asked if they would support a one percent sales tax, the revenue of which would be dedicated toward public education. The voters readily supported this proposal in support of public education, and yet we have seen our legislature repeatedly oppose such support. The legislature is not representative of the priorities of the state's voters. Hopefully, districts which are competitive will produce election results more representative of voters in all parts of the state, not just the most conservative. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Miriam Lindmeyer.
Good evening. I'm Miriam Lindmeyer, M-I-R-I-A-M-L-I-N-D-M-E-I-P-R. I've heard so many people say the things that I wanted to say, that I'm not going to take long and go through the various notes that I have, but I did want to reiterate, number one, thank you. You've been hearing it from others, but it is so wonderful to have a state where the citizens decided that they did not want a politically driven process, but rather, an independent commission. And I'm really proud of Arizona, and I'm a relatively new resident, retired and moved here in 2007. My husband just joined me, yay, a little while ago, permanently retired. We both work part-time, and I have to say, I've heard some people wanting to disassociate from Tucson tonight. I love Tucson. I live in Green Valley and Sararita, and I certainly would like to see those communities stay together, but both my husband and I work part-time in Tucson. I tutor in the Tucson Public Schools, and my husband teaches at Pima Community College. So, we both go back and forth, and having lived on the east coast and the west coast and the Midwest, the commute from Green Valley, Sararita, up here to Tucson is pretty minimal and very pleasurable compared to some of what I've experienced. So, I look at, in particular, South Tucson and central Tucson as a community of interest, certainly from our perspective. I have special dietary needs. I have to come to Tucson about every ten days, because there are only some grocery stores that carry some of the things. I can't get those products down where I live. And a very tight group of sixteen of us, who all came from different places and are really close friends in the community where I live, down in Sararita, half of them come to church up here in South Tucson. So, I feel like we are part of a community of interest with that group. I, however, do not feel so much a community of interest with LD 30, because I feel that LD stretches from Mount Lemon down to below Amado, crosses the mountains, and I will tell you that I've never felt like I've had a vote in what's going on there, and I don't feel very well represented. And I would really hope that you would look at that situation, because I think competitiveness, as a number of people have said tonight, is extremely important. And I would really like to feel, I have had, in my family, Democratic father, Republican mother, two brothers, Republican, and another brother and I, Democrats. We talk about politics all the time, and we rarely agree, but sometimes we do. And I would like to see a district competitive enough that people can be persuaded to other points of views, and you don't always have a candidate from one party.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Gilby.
Good evening. I'm a former candidate from District 27. My name is Bob, B-O-B, Gilby, G-I-L-B-Y. I'm a former candidate from District 27. Two of our representatives are here as senator and a state representative, and I knocked on fifteen hundred doors in this last campaign cycle, and I got to tell you, District 27 is one of the most diverse districts in this state. We have the West University and North University area, the Professional. We have the hippie district up and down Fourth Avenue. We've got the economically-challenged Flowing Wells. It goes out into the Tucson Mountains, the north end of the Tucson Mountains, goes over into Avra Valley. It's horse property over there. Comes down Sandario Road to the retirement community of Tucson Estates. Goes down to the Pasquio Yaki in the south side, comes up through Midvale Park, up through the barrios of Twelfth Avenue and Ajo, and includes the old, old barrios of downtown Tucson and the west side of Tucson. So, to say that District 27 is a community of interest is a really broad, broad, broad community of interest. Wherever I knocked on doors, I found common ground with people, in the legislative issues and the congressional issues. I found common ground. So, with that said, what the community of interest that District 27 is, I couldn't rightly say. It depends on where you stop and knock on the door. So, but what I would like to say is something we do share in common. We're fifty percent Democrats. We're twenty percent Republican and thirty percent independent. Now, that makes for a really boring candidate forum, I got to tell you. There were seven of us up there, and philosophically and ideologically, you couldn't have slipped a business card between us. And what we end up with is a very low voter registration, low voter turnout, and we end up with, what do I say, boring candidate forums and very predictable, very predictable elections. District 29 has the same dilemma. They have very low voter turnout, low registration, predominantly Democrat. Actually, I'm in the third most Democratic district in this state. We're superseded by a couple of West Phoenix areas, what, District 13 and 14, if I'm not mistaken. So, this is why we have one-third, one-third, one-third registration in the state, but such a lopsided legislature driving policy. I would love to be able to sit on a panel with someone from the opposing party and really go at it, you know, toe-to-toe, on issues, on policy, rather than, you know, there's nothing happens after the primary. You might as well go work in somebody else's district where you can make a difference, or work on a state candidate. So, please bring us back into democracy, okay? Give people a reason to go find out who the candidates are. Give people a reason to go vote, because it matters to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Dee Pfeiffer, who will be followed by Keith Van Henningdon, Annette Everlove, and Linda Horowitz.
My name's Dee Pfeiffer, D-E-E-P-F-E-I-F-F-E-R, and I'm from the community of Vail in LD 30 and CD eight. And I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of myself, my husband, and several of our friends in the- in the Antlercrest community, who could not attend tonight because of their jobs. They're lucky enough to have jobs right now. We encourage you, as you direct the mapping company, to draw the lines for LD-30, CD-8, to give extreme weight to our communities of interest. And allow, although it's much larger than this, my main interest would be to allow Vail, Rita Ranch, Corona de Tucson, and Tucson's east side, and then Sarerita and Green Valley to stay together. If you must move a line, move it to the east, toward Benson, as again, we are all small towns with a connection. We are, we are small towns that have the same needs and do not generally consider our needs the same as those of the, I would say, big city of Tucson, but the gentleman called it a metropolitan area, so be that. We deserve to have our own representation, separate from Tucson, and not be the stepchild or second-class citizens of any district. I have to tell you that, you know, I'm kind of new to the process, and all these words seem to have different meanings to different people, and I've attended several of these meetings, and although competitive sounds very, very nice, I really liked it when I first heard it, as I learned more about it and what it means to certain people, I have to tell you, I was very heartened tonight when I saw your handout and what was up on the screen there about your priorities. And they really fall in line with mine. Number one and two, I guess, are mandated. Number four is respect to the communities of interest. And then subordinate to that, and in case there is no significant detriment to those other goals, one through five, then you come to the competitive. So I'm very pleased and heartened to find out that that is going to be your last priority, is the competitiveness. Number, before that, has to be community. It just has to be community, and I encourage you to look at that, consider that, and wouldn't it be nice if you could do all six? But if you can't, the priority has to be community of interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Keith Van Henningan.
My name is Keith Van Heingan, K-E-I-T-H-V-A-N-H-E-Y-N-I-N-G-E-N. I live in Rita Ranch. I am a Tea Party member. I'm a former land surveyor. I've been unemployed due to this lovely economy, but that's not my real problem. My real problem is there are only two board members out of five sitting before me. Tucson has several problems. We have a corrupt city council and mayor. We have a corrupt Pima County Board and its leadership, who supports racist organizations and communist organizations. Now we have a mapping company, who is an obvious supporter of Obama, who's nothing more than a Leninist. You can laugh all you want, but that just means you're a bunch of commies too. Welcome to reality. You want your civility, this is it. And I wish there was, because he would make you be quiet. Like I said, I love the name of your company, but we know who you are and what you are. You live in the information age. We're watching. Don't mess it up. Have a nice night. Try and do better than our locals.
Annette Everlove.
I'm not that short. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Annette Everlove, A-N-N-E-T-T-E-E-V-E-R-L-O-V-E. I am here as a member and representative of the Planned Parenthood Advocates of Arizona Board of Directors. On behalf of that board, I extend our sincere gratitude to this board for the commendable voluntary public service that you are doing. Let me begin by telling you who we are. Planned Parenthood Advocates of Arizona is a political action committee that supports the activities of Planned Parenthood Arizona. Just like this commission, our board is made up of Republicans, Democrats, and Independents from Tucson and Phoenix. Planned Parenthood Arizona has been providing vital medical services and counseling to men and women across Arizona for over seventy-five years. Today, Planned Parenthood provides these services through fourteen health centers in eleven cities across our state. Here in Arizona, over eighty percent of the more than fifty thousand patients that we serve annually receive preventative health care, including life-saving cancer screening, STD testing and treatment, as well as birth control. As a provider of charitable care, we are very often the only health care provider available for many of our patients. We are both excited and hopeful about the redistricting process. As a health care provider that regularly participates in the legislative process, very often not of our choosing, we have witnessed firsthand the deterioration of civic dialogue in our state's legislative process. I think we saw a little bit of that here. There is almost no bipartisanship to speak of on either side of the aisle. Legislation is heard in stacked committee hearings with a near complete disregard for both the facts and the right of interested parties and citizens to be heard. Typically, the results are often predetermined. To us, at least, part of the problem stems from Arizona's lack of competitive legislative districts, once again, on both sides of the aisle. As a result of this lack of competition, legislative races are too often decided in the primaries, primaries dominated by the more extreme elements within each of the two major parties. When legislative races are decided in the primaries, it obviously eliminates the effectiveness and the purpose of general elections. Another key result is low voter turnout. To us, low voter turnout is undemocratic, with a small d. We know voter turnout is not one of the express criteria set forth for this commission, but to us, drawing districts with balanced populations should be a fundamental goal for the commission, resulting in motivating the maximum number of voters to participate in Arizona's electoral process. We know that as a result of Arizona's past record of discrimination, our state's redistricting process is subject to oversight by the United States Department of Justice. We recognize that this commission must respect the legal obligation to maintain minority-majority districts. However, this legal obligation, in our view, has served as excessive justification for districts that are too heavily Democratic, beat Big D, which in turn results in the creation of other Democrat districts that lean too heavily Republican. This may well be in the interest of the two parties to secure safe seats, but it is not in the best interest of Arizona. Arizona needs fewer safe seats and more competitive seats. Thank you again.
Next, Linda Horowitz, who will be followed by Reg. Last name begins with a W, looks like W-I-L, and I can't read the rest of it. Marilyn Zurrell after that, and Leann Anderson after that. Go ahead, Ms. Horowitz.
Hi. My name is Linda Horowitz, L-I-N-D-A-H-O-R-O-W-I-T-Z. I live in the Foothills, and I'm in CD-8 and LD-30. As a Foothills resident, I urge you to keep the Foothills in the same congressional district as at least part of Tucson. We are a community of interest with Tucson. We are not a rural district. We voted recently to not become a city. We identify with Pima County, and we identify with the city of Tucson. So any redistricting that you do, please keep in mind that the Foothills should remain in a district that also includes Tucson. Right now, we're in a district that includes part of East Tucson and then goes down into Cochise County. I don't have any problems with also being associated with the rest of the county, but I do feel we need to have part of Tucson be part of that. I am also in LD-30, and I think you've heard a lot about LD-30, but if you think about the fact that I'm up in the Foothills and that my community of interest is Tucson, to have me in the same legislative district with people who are down much further south of me and much further west of me makes absolutely no sense, more east of me, excuse me. So I would really, truly tell you that to make community of interest, which I know is much higher in the list than whether it's a competitive district or not, to keep our community of interest, we were gerrymandered the last time and put in LD-30. Please take my area and put it back where it belongs, with the rest of the Foothills and near and part of Tucson. The other thing that I would like to say in terms of competitive districts is to look at the fact that Congressional District Eight is a competitive district. It has been a competitive district, and therefore, to try to make it more skewed towards one other or the other of the parties is against the interest of the voters. I was in the League of Women Voters when we worked to get this legislation passed for the wonderful job that you're trying to do, and I urge you to please keep the voters in mind who decided that they wanted this process to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Reg.
My name is Reg Williams, R-E-G-W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S. Just here to express my appreciation as a citizen for the independent work that you're doing, and encourage you to rebuff the assault that the Mad Hatters Tea Party is making on the governor to replace your independent chair. So thank you for what you're doing, and keep on doing it.
Thank you. Marilyn Zurrell.
Thanks for pronouncing my name correctly. My name is Marilyn Zurrell, M-A-R-I-L-Y-N-Z is in Zulu, E-R-U-L-L. I'm a citizen of Oral Valley, having lived there for twenty years. My concern about the redistricting focuses on the community of interest issue. Many of my friends live in Saddle Brook, and I think of them as Oral Valley residents, even though they do not fall within our city limits. Because of their close proximity, the citizens of Saddle Brook use Oral Valley for shopping, medical services, as well as patronizing our restaurants and churches. But Saddle Brook is not the only community that has a close relationship with Oral Valley. Morana borders Oral Valley to the west. Because there is a need to accommodate the traffic between Highway Ten and Oracle Road, these two communities plan to stimulate economic development and encourage business growth by widening the Tangerine Corridor. Morana also uses both Oral Valley and Tucson proper for much of their business as well. I ask that you take into consideration the close relationship between these three communities when drawing the district lines. The political representation for Saddle Brook, Oral Valley, and Morana need to be Congress. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Leann Anderson, followed by Carolyn Cox, Marilyn Rego, and Glenn Lundell.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity. My name is Leann Anderson, L-E-I-A-N-N-A-N-D-E-R-S-O-N, and I request that our communities of interest are kept together because we share social and economic characteristics. I have lived in Arizona for thirty-five years. My husband and I live in Pima County, twenty miles south of Tucson, in Green Valley, Arizona. We ask that our current workable boundaries for LD-30 be maintained. Keeping natural boundaries makes economic sense. I would like to see the city of Tucson moved to CD-7. Northern and eastern Pima County needs to stay with Cochise County in CD-8. We have similar interests. As an I-19 alternate from Green Valley, we travel north on Nogales Highway and east on Sarerita Road to use Houghton Road north to the far east side of Tucson, because our kids live on the east side of Tucson. Our kids chose the rural suburban lifestyle so important for young families. We shop at Walmart and Fry's Marketplace in Sarerita, among other Sarerita businesses. We support Sarerita, Tucson, and Sierra Vista economically, because we patronize restaurants and the outdoor recreation areas in those places. My husband is a member of the American Legion Post-66 on Duval Road in Green Valley. Military families are tied with Davis-Monthan Air Force Base and tied to Sierra Vista with Fort Huachuca. I volunteer in Green Valley at the forty-seven-year-old White Elephant Thrift Store. The White Elephant benefits all of southern Arizona. We host an annual October festival and parade, attended by hundreds of people. My husband, family, and friends enjoy and utilize outdoor square miles in southern Arizona, from the Santa Catalina Mountains to Green Valley's Madera Canyon in the Santa Rita Mountains. In Sierra Vista, we utilize San Pedro Riparian National Conservation Area and the Ramsey Canyon Preserve, famous for its hummingbirds. We enjoy birdwatching and hiking. Through our travels, we observe that Sarerita, Green Valley, and Sierra Vista are tied by multiple communities of interest, both economic and social. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Cox.
Yes, thank you. My name is Carolyn Cox, C-A-R-O-L-Y-N-C-O-X. My husband and I retired to Tucson in 1998 in order to ride bicycles year-round. Our community of interest goes from the top of Mount Lemon, south to Vail, Sarerita, and Sierra Vista, and from the Rincon Mountains on the east to Harrison on the west, and includes Rita Ranch and Purple Heart Park. The rural, low-density housing and roads with low traffic and biking shoulders are what we want to keep in our Legislative District Thirty. We ride on Spanish Trail, love the farmer's market, riding in Sora Park East through the Forty-Niner and into the Reddington Ranch area. Our community of interest is the rural feel of this area and the huge variety of riding areas with low traffic. We also request that the city of Tucson be moved into Congressional District Seven to make the Congressional District Eight a more rural district. Thank you.
Marilyn Rego.
Members of the commission, I am Marilyn Rego. That's M-A-R-I-L-Y-N-R-E-G-O, and I'm a member of the Sun City Vestoso HOA. I'm here tonight to ask you to be fair and to do the right thing regarding the Saddle Brook community. Saddle Brook is a community of like-interest to Sun City. We in Oral Valley know many residents of Saddle Brook as friends, members of our churches, supporters of our economy, shoppers in our marketplace, theater-goers, and huge supporters of the arts and entertainment in Tucson. Saddle Brook was master-planned to be a part of the Tucson area, not Casa Grande. If your redistricting plan is to move them to the Casa Grande District, you will make thousands of business owners and voters really upset. So do the right thing and keep them in CD-8 and LD-26. We need our Saddle Brook friends to be in contact with us daily, as it has been over the last years. So do the right thing and keep like communities together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Glenn Lundell, followed by Connie Woodbray, Betsy Zukowski, and Mona Alisa Moring.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Glenn Lundell. That's G-L-E-N-N-L-U-N-D-E-L-L. My wife, Arliss, and that's A-R-L-I-S, and I live down in Green Valley. My purpose in being here is speaking to the area of community interest, because... My purpose in being here is speaking to the area of community interest, because we both, when we moved here separately at the time, we were looking for an area that was not in town but had certain suburban and essentially rural characteristics that would appeal to retirees. And we found it there, and many, many of our neighbors are the same way and feel about it. So, I guess my recommendation to you is you not disrupt what I would consider to be essentially a good relationship in LD 30 and CD 8. I know that you do have some population areas you have to deal with, and I would suggest that you do those by moving something that is pure heavy population, as opposed to the rural areas. Our community relationships extend all the way from Amato to the south of Sierra, excuse me, of Green Valley into Sawarita, and on into Vale and eastern part of Tucson, and essentially also into Sierra Vista. It happens that we have four children residing in the area ranging from Green Valley to Vale and eastern part of Tucson. So we have a personal interest in this, as well as a professional one you might have. Now, as examples of community interests, as I see it, are shopping, as far as, and that's, others have spoken to this, we have the centers in Sawarita and Green Valley. Education, the school districts merge themselves from Green Valley into Sawarita's unified school district. Cultural and recreation, there are multiple facilities that are used within our communities, and they service that whole broad area, ranging from south of Green Valley all the way into the Vale and Rita Ranch areas and so forth. Religious aspects, there are many churches or religious centers located in all of that area. And it's interesting how many residents of parts of Sawarita or Amato and Green Valley go to the other ones that are there. And this extends all the way over to the Vale community, because I know people that drive in to Green Valley going to church there. The culture, the business areas, spoken before, I think by someone, that the Sawarita and Green Valley Chambers of Commerce are joined by their name, because they recognize that the common interest of their business meant that they had to do this to work together. And this is followed by the banking and real estate industries as well. Social services, the White Elephant was mentioned, that's a marvelous thrift operation that does a tremendous job. It draws from all the regions of southern Arizona, the people that contribute and come there and buy. And they do marvelous jobs with scholarships for people all over the area. There are many other nonprofit organizations, Casa de Esperanza, Friends Indeed, Valley Assistance Services, all these, while they're based generally in the Green Valley area, serve the whole region, from Sawarita and even to the eastern part in the county areas. Interesting, one is law enforcement and safety.
I need you to finish up.
Pardon me?
That was your beep. Those beeps were for you, so I need you to finish.
Oh, okay. Law enforcement's another one, because they have the common volunteers that the Green Valley has, its Sheriff's Auxiliary Volunteers, Sawarita has its volunteers that work with their police departments. Veteran services and military services have been mentioned before, and they extend all the way Davis-Monthan and on into Sierra Vista. Media is interesting.
Thank you. We need you to finish up now, because we've got lots of folks waiting.
Right now, okay. Media is interesting, because the newspaper covers the whole area.
Okay, good. We got it. Thank you. Connie Woodbray.
Hi, I'm Connie Woodbray, C-O-N-N-I-E-W-O-O-D-B-R-E-Y. And I want to thank the Commission for being independent. You are to be commended for this tough job, one that is so important to all us Arizonans. I am especially pleased that you have shown each other mutual respect and mutual support. In my view, the very most important thing is that you provide a redistricting map that has a maximum degree of competitiveness possible in all districts. By competitiveness, I mean districts where candidates from either of the two major political parties have a real chance of being elected. It's only fair to citizen voters that they not be disenfranchised by residing in non-competitive districts. I have lived in a non-competitive Arizona district the past 10 years. I and all members of my minority party have been disenfranchised. They think about some of the bad aspects, think about some of the bad aspects of non-competitive districts. Seldom does the minority party provide a full slate of candidates, and even when a few good minority candidates do step forward and work very, very hard. The reality is there is never any real chance of their being elected. And of course, many real good candidates never do step into the political arena, because they know full well they have no chance of winning. In the minority party, in the majority party, over time, the candidates in their primaries tend to take more and more radical, extreme positions on issues of major importance to the citizenry. They win their primaries, and election in the general is assured, usually without any great amount of work in the campaigns. So again, please do create competitive districts. While all of the other factors you must weigh can and often do have significance to the citizenry, competitiveness looms over all the others. I have heard a number of people say that their community of interest is most important. Sometimes such comments ring true. But more than occasionally, I interpret those comments really to be arguments against competitiveness. As just one example, I believe in protecting the rights of minority groups, but I hope you do not overpack districts with the result of diminishing the competitiveness of other That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Betsy Zukowski, B-E-T-S-Y-Z-U-K-O-S-K-I. And I moved here with my family, four children, and my husband, 42 years ago, and have been in Arizona and active in the community, as well as working in the community, volunteering with various groups and so forth. One of the things that has impressed me about Arizona is that over important issues, the people speak out. And one of them was, that gave me a big thrill, was when we voted for the proposition that set up this commission. And I've watched it the first time and this time, and I congratulate you for what you're endeavoring to do against great odds under the circumstances. And I feel terribly strongly that people need to vote, they have the right to vote, and they need to have their votes count. And the primary elections in the state of Arizona have become very important, as we have grown and spread out and the population has changed. And I feel very strongly that we need to keep in mind that the competitiveness of districts will be very important as we move on into the future. And with that, I will finish. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mona Alisa Moring, followed by Shirley Cooney, Edward Kennedy, and Jerry Otoboni.
Mona, M-O-N-A, Moring, MS and mother, O-E-H-R-I-N-G. Ladies and gentlemen of this commission, proverb 17 says that the fear of God, the fear of God is the beginning of knowledge, but fools hate wisdom. I would say this, I would not have this commission to be foolish. So my words of wisdom tonight to the commission is this: Do not draw lines that will destroy communities and areas that have much in common. Saddle Brook, Oral Valley, Casas Adobes must remain in Legislative District 26. Do not redistrict with political gain in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Shirley Cooney.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Cooney. And I live in LD 26, Pima County. And I have friends throughout that whole district, and for that reason, I am here. I have come to ask that LD 26 be basically left as it is at the present. The whole area is a congenial community, yet competitive politically, as recent history will attest. To make LD 26 more cohesive in the spirit of Arizona State statutes and Proposition 106, to achieve near equal populations, I am proposing the following. The southern boundary to be changed to Rita River, not just River Road. The eastern boundary to become Swan Road. The northeastern boundary, the Catalina Mountains, as it is today. The western boundary, I-10, north to Morana, including Morana to the west of I-10. The northwestern boundary, Dove Mountain, Rancho Vistoso, Catalina, Saddle Brook, up to Oracle, perhaps, and even to San Manuel. All these northern areas relate to LD 26 for church, medical attention, shopping, school, and entertainment. There are fast friendships forged throughout this whole area. This whole area relates as one, with the one exception that there is an even spread of political views between independents, Democrats, and Republicans. It is in this spirit that I recommend that this become the new LD 26 for the next 10 years. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. My name is Edward Kennedy, and I reside at 65168 East Emerald Ridge, Tucson, in the community known as Saddle Brook. I am a member of the nonpartisan group, Penal County Citizens for Excellence in Government, and that's who I'm representing tonight, besides myself. And I wish to discuss two items in my allotted time. This is a copy of the Notarized Declaration application of the chairman, Colleen Mathis. Mrs. Mathis is unqualified to sit on the AIRC, because she falsely submitted her application and was not truthful in what she wrote. She signed the application on October 12, 2010, and did not list her husband as specified by question number eight, which asked basically that all relatives in their professions be listed, but did list her two brothers. At that time, Mr. Mathis was actively employed as a treasurer of the Nancy Young Wright campaign. By failing to state his obvious connection to the Tucson Democratic Party and the candidate, she did not answer question number six truthfully, which asked if there was any possible conflict of interest in her ability to discharge her duties in a fair and impartial manner. One question, she said she forgot to list her husband and his occupation. This is a notarized document, so it is possible she may have perjured herself as well. Ladies and gentlemen, I do not like to accuse people of lying when they cannot defend themselves, but I will let you be the judge. How can a woman recall her brothers and not her husband? Her actions on the AIRC speak for themselves in her casting the deciding vote to hire the leftist progressive firm of strategic telemetry for the mapping contrast. This firm has definite Democratic leanings, as they were the strategists for both John Kerry and Barack Obama. They are also active in recall elections against incumbent GOP officials in other states. In my opinion, this woman is unfit to hold the position and should resign immediately. The second item I wish to comment on is the placement of my community, Saddle Brook. I have been told it is the preliminary recommendation of the mapping firm that we be taken out of LD 26 and placed with the community of Maricopa over 100 miles away. This is an obvious attempt to decrease the GOP representation in an already competitive district. LD 26 has roughly one-third Democrats, one-third Republicans, and one-third independents. Our address is Tucson, not Maricopa or Casa Grande. We have no ties to any of these other areas, other than the fact we are in a small part of Penal County. It makes literally no sense to include us with these far-flung communities.
That was your beep. I need you to finish up now.
Yes, one more sentence. This is a blatant attempt at gerrymandering in its most obvious form. Primary reason this is being done is that Nancy Young Wright lost her bid for election, and the swing votes came from Saddle Brook, which, by the way, has the largest GOP club west of the Mississippi and probably the nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Otoboni, who will be followed by Matty Erkin, Tom Przelski, and Pete Bangston.
My name is Jerry Otoboni. I want to commend you, because I noticed on your, can you hear me okay? I noticed on your forum, you mentioned that there was an interpreter available, but if I might make the suggestion, is have an interpreter interpret the meeting, because your live stream and on your, also when you have your, you know, the video, the people who are deaf, which is a very large community up in Phoenix, and also around the state, they can watch the whole transaction with an interpreter at the same time. Okay? So my name is Jerry Otoboni, and that's G-E-R-I-O-T-T-O-B-O-N-I. And I would like to point out that Legislative District 26 and CD 8 are very competitive districts. In 2006, Chairman Charlene Piscara, a Democrat, was voted in as Arizona senator, and Lena Saradick, Democrat, was voted in as a House representative. Pete Hirschberger, Republican, was also voted in as House representative. Gabrielle Gifford, a Democrat, was voted in as U.S. Congresswoman. In 2008, Gabrielle Gifford, a Democrat, was re-elected as U.S. Congresswoman. Al Melvin, a Republican, as state senator. Nancy Young Wright, a Democrat, House representative, and Vic Williams, Republican, were voted in. So LD 26 has had both Democrat and Republicans in both legislative positions, which makes for an already very competitive district. Saddle Brook, Oral Valley, and Morana are currently in LD 26 and would be considered, besides a competitive district, also a community of interest, as the proposition has stated as a requirement. Tangerine Road is a connective entity, as the citizens who live in Dove Mountain, which is considered Morana, mostly do their shopping in Oral Valley, just as Saddle Brook residents come down Oracle Road to do their shopping in Oral Valley. Saddle Brook and Oral Valley are both bounded on the Catalina Mountains on the east and a similar range on the west, which also includes Morana, and they are all north of river, which also satisfies the natural geographical boundary required of Proposition 106. On the radio the other day, the mayor of Oral Valley, Dr. Hiramath, stated that he had sent a letter to the governor of Arizona. stated that he had sent a letter to the governor of Arizona about the plan to annex Oro Grande into Oro Valley. This was a plan that the town of Oro Valley had voted for by the previous council, Democrats and Republicans alike. There are 900,000 acres that have been discussed for annexation for Oro Valley, and the development would come up to the Panal County line. When that project is finished, Saddle Brook residents, instead of having to drive approximately 7 miles for shopping, hospitals, doctor's offices, will only have to drive 1 mile, or even walk. So as you can see, Saddle Brook, Oro Valley, and Morana satisfy Proposition 106 requirements for—not only for communities of interest, but also competitive districts, and are geographically connected. Thank you.
Thank you. Maddie Urquen.
My name is Maddie Urquen, M-A-D-D-Y-U-R-K-E-N, and I live in Saurita. First, let me add my thanks to all of the commissioners for giving your time and talents to our community. Your job is obviously not easy, but it is extraordinarily important, and I'm grateful that you've taken this on. I am happy to have the opportunity to participate in a process created by Arizona voters that puts a balanced, independent commission in charge of defining fair congressional and legislative district maps. I would like to ask the commission to improve the competitiveness of our districts by creating a map in which no district has an overwhelming number of registered voters in any one party, so that all candidates have a fair chance of winning elections. Statewide, there are approximately equal numbers of registered Republicans and Democrats. The fact that 70% of our state senate and 2/3 of the House are Republican tells us that our legislative districts are not competitive enough. One visit to a single legislative session will demonstrate that this situation has effectively silenced the parties who represent a full 2/3 of our citizens. That's not a good thing. In my legislative district, LD 30, the playing field is not even close to level. Almost 80% of the registered voters in LD 30 live in Pima County, a county in which there are about 30,000 more registered Democrats than registered Republicans. However, only 28% of registered voters in LD 30 are Democrats. 41% are Republican. The perception of too many LD 30 voters is that their vote doesn't matter, and that tends to favor low voter turnout. Some Democrats feel they can't win, and some Republicans feel their candidate will win with or without their vote. When citizens don't vote for any reason, democracy loses. I have every confidence that this commission can define districts that are competitive with no detriment to the other five criteria mandated by Proposition 106. Once again, thank you for your work on this vital matter and the opportunity to address you.
Thank you. Tom Prezelski.
Thank you, members of the commission. My name is Tom Prezelski. I reside at 343 South Convent Avenue in Barrio Viejo, Tucson, Arizona. I served in the State House.
Spell your name.
Oh, you want it spelled? Everybody knows how to spell Prezelski. P-R-E-Z-E-L-S-K-I. And I served in the State House of Representatives for six years, from 2003 to 2008. And I have also served on the City of Tucson Redistricting Commission. I'm not going to pretend that that gives me any particular sympathy with what you're doing because our task was relatively easy, painless, and non-controversial. I wanted to address some of the criticism that this commission has been taking. Some of the criticism makes the assumption, kind of a revisionist history assumption, that what this commission is doing is somehow unprecedented. And the truth is, is that this commission did meet 10 years ago. It was impaneled 10 years ago. And there was an independent chairman of that commission who had been active in partisan political campaigns. It just happened those political campaigns were Republican. And the results of what happened, not everyone was happy with the map that was created. There was a lot of grousing on my side of the political fence. Those folks got over it. There was certainly a lot of grousing on the other side of the political fence, and I think they got over it, too. And I think we ended up—the result of what this commission came up with was actually—I think was fair. It wasn't perfect. It was far from perfect, but it was—I think it was fair, and it was the best result we could have gotten. The point of this commission, the reason why it exists, is because of the basic concept that legislators should be chosen by their constituents, rather than legislators choosing their constituents. And I'm disturbed by some of the rhetoric that's been coming out of the legislature where they want to return to the system as it existed prior to the 1990s. And what you saw was districts that were drawn for a partisan agenda to protect specific incumbents. And in Tucson, you had the old District 14, which was drawn to protect some Democratic incumbents. And it connected some neighborhoods that had absolutely nothing to do with each other, other than their partisan voting record. Connected some neighborhoods—fairly affluent neighborhoods on the far east side with some very poor neighborhoods on the west side in a shape that looked like the Starship Enterprise. And that's something we definitely want to work against. So I'm a little disturbed when I hear people saying that partisanship and voting patterns should be accounted for when you consider what a community of interest is. Right now, we're in South Tucson. This is the community I represented when I was in the legislature. And this community is not defined by the fact that these folks happen to vote for Democrats. This community is defined by family, religion, food, especially food. And that's what defines a community. And their voting patterns come out of that, rather than being defined by the fact that they're Democrats. And I'm glad we have a lot of people here who are from other parts of our community. I hope you all get a chance to go eat at Rigo's or Pico de Gallo and experience what this community is about. It's not just about the fact that they're Democrats. So I—
Need you to finish up.
Oh, well, of course. So I urge the commission to keep doing what it's doing, and—you know, just remember what a community of interest is really about, and it's not about—it's not about their partisanship. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll have Pete Bangston, followed by Betty Bangston, Vince Leach, and Doris Platonoff. We have about 10 more speaker forms after that. Thank you all for your patience and listening to everyone. If there is anyone else that would like to speak that hasn't submitted a speaker form, please do it right now. Thank you. Mr. Bangston, go ahead.
Hello.
Keep it down so Mr. Bangston can speak, please.
Hello, my name is Peter Bangston. That's B-E-N-G-T-S-O-N. I live in Pima County in LD 26. I just want to mention I fully support the current independent redistricting commission. The two Democrats and two Republicans were appointed as required in Proposition 106. And at the March 1st meeting, Ms. McNulty nominated Colleen Mathis for chair. Mr. Sturt seconded it, and there was no objection. She was elected unanimously. I've been to a couple of your business meetings, and the commission is working very well, and I think Colleen Mathis is a good choice for chair, and I hope she will continue on in that role. I also support the selection of strategic telemetry for the mapping consultant. I know it was a tough decision, but the objective of strategic telemetry now is basically a technical job of mapping to meet the six criteria. One of the things I'd like to see come out with the first set of maps, which I haven't heard before, is some of the measures that strategic telemetry is planning and the IRC is going to be using to define competitive districts and compact districts. When we look at those maps, it would be very important to see what definitions are being used to establish that. Mention was made of these six goals. The slideshow was—by necessity was briefer, just bullet points. But just like to mention that the compact and contiguous goal is to be done to the extent possible, not exact. To the extent practical, district lines shall be used. To the extent practical, competitive districts. And, you know, competitive districts are—says when there's no other—when there's no significant detriment. I wanted to talk about—also about this goal that hasn't been mentioned very much, number E. To the extent practical, district lines shall use visible geographic features, city, town, county boundaries, and undivided census tracts. There's been a lot of talk about communities of interest, but just as important is the one about using visible geographic boundaries. As I mentioned, I live in Legislative District 26. I have no community of interest with the section up there in Pima County, and I'd like to see the north boundary of LD 26, or whatever the new district is, cut off at the county boundary. Thank you.
Thank you. Betty Bangston.
Thank you. It's been a long evening for all of us.
Yes, it has.
My name is Betty Bangston. That's B-E-T-T-Y-B-E-N-G-T-S-O-N. And I live in Pima County, LD 26, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I think we're very lucky to have an independent commission process, rather than a more politicized process by our—by legislature. And I'd like to congratulate the commission on the fine job you've done to date. You've proceeded under some difficult circumstances with the best interests of all the citizens of Arizona at heart. Secondly, I'd like to speak to the importance of having competitive districts in the state. As we all know, Arizona has a low voter turnout. You've heard that from a number of speakers this evening. Many of our citizens feel disenfranchised. They believe their opinions and votes don't count because previous districting efforts have resulted in so many non-competitive districts in Arizona. It's up to this commission to fix the situation, so all I say is more competition, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leach.
I think I've got it. Can you hear me? Madam Chair, Commissioner, thank you. I would like to say, first of all, my name is Vince Leach, L-E-A-C-H. Thank you, Counselor. 62927 East Harmony. I live in Saddle Brook. And all I'm saying now is, wow, I'm glad the old commissioners aren't here, to hear the blasting that they're taking for what they did 10 years ago in turning that vile House and Senate into a majority on the Republican side, both in the House and the Senate. I would—I would argue before the commissioners that they maybe look at district lines and redistricting as it stands to the six points pointed out and kind of take the message out of what goes into elections, which you have no control over. The message sent the majority to the House and the Senate. The redistricting committee did not. I would like to speak about compactness, as well as a community of interest. I will speak about Oro Valley, Morana, Saddle Brook, Catalina, and a portion going northward into Panal County. As some of the commissioners heard earlier from me, I will further expand that, and I really wish that all of them were here. I appreciate that they can listen by video, by live streaming. It's something another—to look in a person's face and have a discussion that we're having here this evening with all the people. We get our TV. Our Saddle Brook TV comes out of Tucson. We use the airport. We use the restaurants. We shop there. For those in Oro Valley, we pay the speeding tickets to the Oro Valley on all the policemen, on Oracle, you know, from Tangerine down. We pay a lot. Those are all Saddle Brook cars. We do our recreation there. Our health facilities, all of our doctors, our dentists, we rely on that. As I told the commission in one other meeting, and I would like to go on record again, my health insurance policy asked me what market I was in, what general market. They didn't ask me if I was in a Casa Grande market. They asked me if I was in Tucson market or a Phoenix market. I'm obviously in a Tucson market. Many of our people who go to the house of worships go across the county line. We have one in Saddle Brook, a non-denominational church. Most of our residents that participate in that event on Sundays, or whatever may be their day, go across the county line. Some of those churches are literally right on the county line, one of them being the Old Missile Site that I'm sure many of you are aware of. We heard last time that there should be some definitions, potentially and possibly, added to this. You've heard some lines for LD 26. You've heard Swan on the east. I would go up to the mountains, up to Oracle, maybe just south of Coolidge and down through Morana. I was timed for four minutes, and I got the rules changed. Thank you for your attention.
Doris Platonoff, followed by Lynn St. Angelo, Linda White, and Donald Crete.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Doris Clattonoff, D-O-R-I-S, and you pronounced it right. My address is 65619 East Rose Ridge Drive, Tucson, Arizona, and I say that because I live in Saddle Brook. And I'll have folks know that I moved to Saddle Brook from South Texas, which is a lot like South Tucson. So there you have it. I want to address briefly three areas: communities of interest, contiguousness, and competitiveness. My husband and I moved to Saddle Brook in 1998. I had become a Rotarian in South Texas, and I joined the Rotary Club out here. And by gosh, in two years, I became president of that club. And one of the things that I did was drive down monthly to a restaurant down on Swan and Pima and meet with all of the Tucson-area presidents of Rotary, and that included Oro Valley and Morana. And the reason we meet together is because Rotary is divided into three districts in the state of Arizona. And we are in the South District, which is District 5500. That's all of—somebody's gonna say, "Are you a Rotarian?" I shouldn't ask that. But anyhow, this includes all of Southern Arizona. So we work with Tucson. We work with Rio Rico. We work with Green Valley. We work with Sierra Vista. This is where our district is, and these are the people that we work with. Now, as a Rotarian in Saddle Brook, we have tutored at Catalina Mountain School, which is in Pima County. That's a detention center for boys. We work with Coronado Elementary School. We tutor out there. That is in Pima County. Eagle Crest kids go to school there, and we give scholarships to Ironwood Ridge and Canyon del Oro. Those are schools in Oro Valley. We sponsor a young man who goes to Ironwood Ridge to spend a year over in Italy. So our Rotary Club also works with the Rotary Club down here, and we do things down in Mexico and in Africa. So this is a great community of interest, not only in our community for what we do, but in the broader world. Now, in addition to that, as was alluded to earlier, my husband and I go to Catalina Lutheran Church. I am the organist there. This is in Pima County. And as was alluded to, many of our folks come down to Pima County. I'm not going to go to church up in Maricopa. That's over 100 miles away. And people may not know—you know, if you want to put counties together, people may not know that Panal County, in which we live, right by Pima County, as a county, is larger than some states in the United States of America. Now, I looked at a map, and that put Saddle Brook along with Maricopa, Casa Grande, and all of this rural area in the middle. And there we have Maricopa, 103 miles away from us. I know very few people in Maricopa. And if you're going to look at communities of interest, this is our community of interest down here. This is, as was pointed out earlier, this is where we go to the doctor. This is where we go to the hospital. This is where we spend our sales tax dollars, and we do that gladly, you know, down here in Oro Valley and in Tucson. This is our community— This is our community of interest. This is where we spend our money. This is where we do things. And this has to do with compactness, too, because you look at Maricopa and you look at what's up there. If you want to be compact, my time is up. If you want to be compact, this is it. And by gosh, we need to be competitive, and I think CD8 and LD26, I've enjoyed the fighting there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. St. Angelo.
Wow, it's hard to follow this. I am Lynn St. Angelo, L-Y-N-N-E-S-T period A-N-G-E-L-O, and I would like to talk about my community of interest, and I'd like to submit a map that's gonna go along with what I have to say. I live in Oro Valley, which is sandwiched between Morana and Saddle Brook. The outside boundaries are the mountains on the east, Saddle Brook and Pinal County line on the north, and Morana on the west. The major streets are Tangerine and Ina, as the east-west connectors to I-10 and Oracle Road. These communities have recently formed, moved, M-O-V-E, to stimulate business growth along the Tangerine Corridor, which will connect with Pinal County plans to have a large switching station, which will expand the railroad lines that run through Picacho Peak. So this northwest area of Tucson will be expanding northward into more of Pinal County as a connected business community. In addition, Saddle Brook, Oro Valley, and Morana are all connected with our clubs, shopping, churches, schools, hospitals, movie theaters, and other interests. We don't go to the east side of Tucson or downtown Tucson at all. In fact, I have driven people from my neighborhood downtown for a specific reason, because they have lived here for 20 years and never driven downtown. Therefore, I request that you respect our communities of like interest, Saddle Brook, Oro Valley, and Morana, as you draw the district lines. It is also, I'd like to request, it's also very difficult to speak to a community of interest without knowing what each commissioner thinks a community of interest is. So I respectfully request that each one of the commissioners give their personal definition of community of interest as allowed by Arizona Statute 38-431.01 subsection H at the end of this meeting or at the next redistricting meeting. That would really help us a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Linda White.
Linda White, L-I-N-D-A-W-H-I-T-E. The community of Saddle Brook is an integral and vibrant asset of LD26. As a community, its interest, its livelihood, its existence rely on shared values of the district as a whole. Financially, spiritually, business relations, and as a voting block for all political parties, the community of Saddle Brook shares far more with its brethren in the district than it does with Pinal County as a whole. Geographically, the closest communities for Saddle Brook and Pinal are Eloy and Florence, a far cry from Jelly Life, shared with its closer neighbors in Catalina, Oro Valley, and Rancho Vestoso. I question the logic and motives of several to determine that the community of Saddle Brook be redistricted out of LD26. I would also like to commend our Attorney General, Tom Horn, for taking the action he has with request with respect to this commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Donald Kret. Mr. Kret will be followed by Rachel McMenamin, Betty Johnson, and Rebecca Spann.
Thank you. I want to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak here. I also want to thank you for this state, for establishing this commission, and I want to thank you for your service here. I happen to come from a state where the legislature, the last five times after, when they had to redistrict, it was a bifurcation between legislature and one of the houses or another one of the state, and all five times, the State Supreme Court had to go and do the I was fortunate to have served back in my native state on both the county board and the city council, and the one good thing about that state is they were nonpartisan. So you had to deal with other people. Sometimes you knew what party they belonged to or what their preference was, sometimes you didn't. But it became a lot easier to cooperate, because you had no people telling you, this is the party line, you gotta follow it. So it became a lot easier to do, and I hope you follow what is good here and you follow the prerequisites of what you're supposed to. The one thing is, I think to make it as competitive as you can, I know there's other criteria. What I don't know is that to go to, and I live in Sarita, 70 miles from Sierra Vista, I had a son until a year and a half ago, but he took a job with NATO in a place called Afghanistan, was teaching at a counterintelligence school there. 70 miles across the Santa Rita Mountains and over the county line, and there's a community of interest. It's a military town. The only thing of a community of interest I see between this is that it's a similar voting pattern as the rest of the non-competitive District 30. Everything else is BS, and that's the kindest words I can say. It shouldn't be in that district. There's no community of interest. Sarita is mostly a bedroom community with some senior citizens, as is Green Valley, and there's more community of interest there. But it's got its own shopping areas and that, and Sierra Vista, and when people are saying it's community of interest, they say, ah, but they mostly vote Republican. That's not a community of interest. The thing is, we want to get a balance, and I think if you go what you can to do a balance, you're gonna have some that are gonna be, and probably more that are gonna be Republican, and some that'll be heavily Democratic. But if you get out there and you do your job, if you can make more, as many as you can, competitive, you're gonna have better candidates, you'll have less of a tug to the right or to the left, and that you'll end up with a better representation and a better outcome for the people of the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Could you spell your name for the court reporter?
Yeah, Donald Kret, D-O-Y-A-L-D-K-R-E-T. Never misspell four other words.
Next, we have Rachel McMenamin.
Hi, thank you so much for allowing me an opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Rachel McMenamin. It's R-A, oh, let me do that. Thank you. It's Rachel McMenamin, R-A-C-H-E-L, last name McMenamin, M-C-N-E-N-A-M-I-N.
Get right up close to that mic. Big voice.
So first, I just want to thank the commission for doing independent work, and I do feel very fortunate to be in an area where there is an independent commission in terms of doing redistricting and that it's not done along partisan lines. My husband and I moved to Tucson seven years ago in order to start a family, which we've done, and we chose to live in Morana, mostly because it is a community that seemed like a great place to raise children with a number of other young families who were also starting their families. As a result, we have elementary schools that are overflowing with children because we have a number of young families. So I'm somewhat surprised to hear that a community of interest of mine is Saddle Brook, which I'm sure is a wonderful community, although I've never even stepped foot there, and Oro Valley as well. These are both districts or areas which I don't actually spend as much time. I do find myself doing a lot of my business in Morana and in Tucson, in downtown Tucson. That's where I spend most of my time, and these, to me, seem like-minded or communities of interest. As far as Oro Valley and Saddle Brook, I'm not really aware of what the connection or the community of interest is. Obviously, I think it's important to understand what everybody means by that term, but it seems to me that despite other various disagreements, one agreement everyone has come to is that a community of interest is one that includes shared shopping, business experiences, and I don't find myself spending time in Oro Valley or in Saddle Brook doing business. My children, when they have gone to preschool, it's an elementary school, or now in Morana, in preschool, they were in downtown Tucson. So that's what I'd like to say in terms of community of interest, and I'd like that to be taken into account. And I really do, again, appreciate the opportunity to speak about that tonight. And I do find, also, it's interesting, it's for, to see there aren't that many people like myself here, it doesn't seem like, other young moms with other young children. So I'm glad I'm having this opportunity to speak, and I hope that I can speak for the interest of other parents whose main concern really is education, and that seems to be a concern that's heavily overlooked in a state that's known to be the worst in funding for education. And that's something that's very disappointing, and I must say that a lot of friends of mine are thinking very strongly about leaving the state because of that, and it's something that's crossed our minds as well. In order to maintain the state population and keeping, if we're talking about communities of interest, it might be nice for people to have a voice and feel represented, who are other parents of small children and who have an vested interest in the education system going forward. So, again, but I wanted to thank all of you, and I really appreciate the work that you've been doing, and I look forward to attending more meetings and hearing more from everybody. It's been very interesting and enlightening, and that's really it.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
It's been wonderful standing up. You must feel the same way. Take a break. Anyway, my name is Betty Johnson, B-E-T-T-Y-J-O-H-N-S-O-N. My husband and I have lived in Green Valley full-time for the last eight years. Having moved here from New Hampshire, which has the second or third largest representative body in the country, I can't imagine what redistricting would be like there, where just about every small town had a representative. Not so here. Anyway, thank you for all the time that you're volunteering for this important activity. I'm really glad that you're an independent group, that you're free of political maneuvering, and I certainly want it to remain that way. I definitely believe in competition in politics. In our democracy, it's critical for the well-being of our state, for our country. Too much power in the hands of one party decreases the opportunity for the airing of different views. For people, views from other parties, they need to be heard, and it's absolutely critical when laws are being written. In addition, when too much power is in the hands of one party, voters not from that party believe that their views and their values are not given a fair hearing. They're not. And it is likely, then, that citizens will not go to the polls, they will not vote, and this is not good for our country. My hope, as you look at these maps, at this blank slate that you're going to be working with, that you develop districts that have as mixed a population, a voting population as is possible, districts that have independents, Democrats, and Republicans. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Spann, who will be followed by Christine Bowserman, David Morales, Sammy Hamid, and Michael Liberty.
Thank you. My name's Rebecca Spann, R-E-B-E-C-A-S-P-A-N-N, and I'm here to discuss, first of all, thank you for your service. I want to tell you, I'm a golfer, and I live in northeast Tucson. I golf at the Arizona National, the 49er Golf Club, Fred Inke. I go down through Rita Ranch to Coronade, Tucson, and then I go both ways to Sarita, Green Valley, and Sierra Vista. Those are my communities of interest. Thank you very much.
Hi, it's Christine with a C-H, and Bowserman, B-E-S-T-M-B-Y-A-U-S-E-R-M-A-N. Hi, and I'm here to talk about CD8. CD8, I would like to see it lose Tucson, all of Tucson, or that probably cannot happen, so some of Tucson, and have it move into CD7. I have played around with lots of maps. I like to do maps, and moving the Tucson line north just a few blocks makes the population work. So it would be keeping Cochise County and eastern Pima County together. This keeps the county and small rural communities together. I have this all over the place. I live in my community because I chose the lifestyle it offers. I want to be represented by people who live like I do. I am in a rural environment with my life centered around the edges of Tucson or in the small outlying towns. It's interesting, I hear this, I watch a lot of the streaming, and I've seen this drumbeat go on all throughout Arizona, as the rural areas do not want to be in the cities, and I really hope you take that to heart, because it means a lot to us. We moved to these counties because we have a different mindset from the city people. We want to be fairly represented in a congressional area of like-minded people who live like we do. We are a rural suburban area. These areas were populated when the suburbia layout came about versus the grid system like in downtown Tucson. Suburbia layouts are based on roads and defined by master community plans. These community plans are well-thought-out, and they really define our communities of interest. They lay out our golf courses, bike paths, hiking paths, shopping parks, and employment areas. CD8 is linked by I-10, the Houghton Road Corridor, Old Spanish Trail, and Sarita Road. Let's see, I'll go down here. Also, I believe we, and I've played around with a lot of maps, we can have three congressional districts that border, that are on the border. Yuma did a really good job defining how they want their river district, and I had someone do that, and if you go up 85 all the way north, you have the population, and this actually gives us another minority district. I'm not sure if the Voters' Right Act includes Indian populations, but it does give us like an Indian district. CD7 is, could be 85 is the western border, and I-19 is the eastern border, having Tucson, southern Maricopa, and Nogales. This ensures the Voters' Right Act with that, with them. CD8 should have an I-19 southern western border, kind of go underneath Tucson with the highway, and they go north, maybe Harrison is what, you know, I would like to see. It has a northern western border, New Mexico is the eastern border, and then mountain range is the natural border. This will give us the population we need, it's compact and contiguous, geographical with the border and the mountain ranges and the roads, and I think it's competitive. I live there. I have Senator Frank Antonori and Gabriel Giffords. You don't get much more competitive than that.
Thank you.
And I have a map.
Please give it to Mr.
And the map has.
Canefield here.
Hi, my name is David Morales, M-O-R-A-L-E-S. I live in LD28, and I'm just gonna respond to a few things I've heard tonight. I don't want to repeat what everyone has been saying. Two things I just wanted to say, and then something more general. One is I'm from Morana, I grew up in Morana, and I find it interesting that people care about Morana all of a sudden, that Dove Mountain is there. So I think that's interesting. I'm from the old Morana. Don't live by the mountains or anything. The other thing I wanted to reiterate was the talk about the prison populations. I think that's hugely important. The reason is, there's, for example, CD1, there's Florence and, you know, big prisons. There's large minority populations, and you can grow your district without having to actually be accountable to the people that are being counted, and you can say that there's more minorities in your district also, without ever having to actually do anything for them. So I think minority, I think the prison populations, they should be counted, the last residents, or not counted at all. Well, I wanted to say something else, though, is I feel it was important that I stay here because, I don't know if you've noticed here, it's, we're in south Tucson, and you probably passed through this festival they were having earlier, and yet, it doesn't look anything like that in here. And I think there's something hugely, there's, you guys have to do something that's more important than, that's bigger than yourselves, way bigger than yourselves. And the future of Arizona is being defined, okay? The demography is changing, that's a fact, and there's gonna be a lot of people that, there's a lot of people that you have to represent that aren't gonna show up. There's huge voter disenfranchisement, there's huge inequalities here, okay? Here in south Tucson, I didn't hear one south Tucson person speak, but you have, you know, Green Valley, you have. Green Valley, you have Saddle Brook, Vale, and there's all kinds of code words that are being used, communities, rural, you know, and stuff. We all know what that means, you know? And there's, you're right. There's huge communities that are separated. Tucson, TUSD, just had a desegregation order just put back on it. Pablo High School, down the street, 98 percent minority, okay? Saddle Brook, I'm sure it's not 50 percent, you know? You can use different words to say what is underlying here. I think you guys know what I'm talking about. I think there's, someone said something about the last, the redistricting. Demographics has changed a lot. I don't think they planned for a two-thirds supermajority in the House and Senate, but that just arose. And it's now your job to fix it due to the new, I mean, you know, there's some districts that are under the 710, there's some that are 900. So it's really, really important what you guys have to do, and I can't stress because there's coming tension that is, like I said, is the future of Arizona. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure I'm getting these, I can't read all these letters, but Sami Hamad? Thank you.
Madam Chairman, good evening. You read it correct, actually. Very good job. My name is Sami Hamad. I'm the resident of Legislative District 27 here in Tucson. Name is spelled S-A-M-I-H-A-M-E-D. Madam Chairwoman, one of the things we've been hearing tonight has been talked about, communities of interest, you know, things like that. And one thing where you're probably, you've heard about in other cities, and I know you have in various hearings, and you probably might hear about it tonight, here tonight is the Voting Rights Act being protected and things like that, protecting communities. Well, there's a group that's been going around in meetings here at the commission talking about the quote-unquote "Voting Rights Act." That's been Fair Trust. David Liberty, Michael Calamati, they represent them. What is the Voting Rights Act? The Voting Rights Act is representing peoples of interest, communities, especially people of color is the Voting Rights Act. You know, the people that have been coming to this commission meetings have been, you know, saying that it's not a fair process, how it's not being done, then you have the Attorney General getting involved, and people coming after you, questioning your integrity, Madam Chairwoman. Well, last time I checked, the Voting Rights Act doesn't protect the tea party as far as I'm concerned. They weren't part of the law when it was written back in this season. They're sure, heck, not included right now, as far as I'm concerned. So to conclude is, keep doing the work you got to do, keep doing the hearings, make our states congressional and legislative districts competitive as possible so we have balance across the board that represents people but also fosters a great debate for the next decade as well. And to you, Madam Chairman, and the commissioners, thank you for the work you do. I'm sorry that you have to take these slings and arrows from people that have been coming at you, if you will, and attacking you personally instead of keeping it above the belt and on the issues, instead of going personal. So to the members of the commission, thank you very much, and good night, and keep up the good work.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Michael Liberty.
Okay? Okay. Good evening, Commissioner McNulty, Commissioner Sturts. Lots of thanks to you, pardon me? Oh, thank you. Lots of thanks to you for coming out here and hearing all of us. Especially thanks to Marty, who I've never had a court reporter, you know, endure this long without a break. So I'm going to use him for my next deposition. I'm an attorney. I represent the Fair Trust. The Fair Trust is a group that's committed to making sure that the process at the commission level is done fairly and independently and impartially. Just a few quick points that I'd like to make. Number one, the Arizona Constitution, under Proposition 106, requires that the commission draw districts, both legislative and congressional districts, that are of equal population. This is available for the commission to do so as part of the software it's using. Another point is, is that the commission should really adopt definitions of competitiveness and communities of interest. And that's important for a number of reasons so that those definitions and concepts could be applied fairly and consistently throughout the state without having one definition of, for example, competitiveness apply in one part of the state and another apply in another part of the state. If that were to happen, that would lead to disenfranchisement. It would lead to diluting of votes. The ideal legislative district consists of 213,067 residents. And according to the 2010 census, Pima County now has 980,263 residents. What this means is that Pima County should have about four and a half legislative districts. In order to do that, some parts of Pima County should be joined with other parts outside the county to make a legislative district. There's been a wealth of testimony that I've heard since the Oral Valley meeting that strongly supports Saddle Brook being joined into Pima County to create a district. And looking at the communities of interest that are now on the record, it seems like that that would make sense to draw them in with Morana and Oral Valley. Communities of interest, keeping communities of interest whole is important in southern Arizona. And I think that the Saddle Brook, Oral Valley, Morana unification emphasizes this. It's important to keep communities of similar cultural and historical heritage together without breaking them apart. It's important to keep communities of interest together because dividing them will dilute their strength, will dilute their votes, dilute their ability to get effective representation at both the legislative and congressional level. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you. That concludes our list of comments. I want to thank you all for spending the evening with us, and those of you who are still here for sitting patiently and listening to everyone. Mr. Sturts, I'll give an opportunity to make a few remarks if you would like.
Thank you, Commissioner McNulty. I appreciate that. I appreciated, it was a request that I had had, or I had made at the Casa Grande hearing that said, we're talking all kinds of things about competitive districts, and I have thrown that out to the audience and anybody that's listening online right now to say to us, you know, what does the definition of, what does the definition of a competitive district mean? Does that mean that it's a third Republican, a third Democrat, and a third Independent? One of the things that you're probably aware of, that the challenge has been, over the last 10 years, that there has been an increase of population in the state of Arizona of approximately 1.2 million people. The legislative districts that we have, just so that you could sort of get an idea about what the add and subtracts are just in the 30 legislative districts, that we've got as much as a swing of an additional requirement in one legislative district where we need to add a population of over 57,000, and in another, we need to make a subtraction of population of over 165,000. So the tasks that we're talking about here, when we're talking about competitiveness and compactness, and the five, and the six criterias listed in the constitutional are very clear. My perspective is really simple. I'm following constitutional requirements. We've got six mandates that we have placed in this. All six are weighted. There's only one that has got a retraction in it, which is the concept of competitive districts where there is, where it creates no significant detriment to the other goals. That is primary and fundamental to follow, the writing of the crafters of Proposition 106, and we are going to follow that, or at least from this seat, I'm going to be following that to the letter. The bigger question that I want to throw out now, because I had some really interesting thoughts of competitiveness that came out, there was two people that came out with actually a definition during the course of tonight's hearing. My next is going to be on what the word independence means. We've got Republicans, which we know what Republican is, we know what a Democrat, we know what a Democrat is, because they're affiliated with a specific party by their registration. An independent or an other is someone that is not affiliated with any party. They are, does that mean that they are independent? That's the question that I have. Does that mean that the one-third of the population, which right now exceeds in lack of registration or registered as an independent, which is right now greater than the Democrats in this state and less than the Republicans, what does that mean as far as independence? Does that mean that they choose not to be a Democrat or Republican? Does that mean that they are truly independent and unbiased in their decision-making? And I'd like at the next hearing, which is going to be taking place tomorrow night in Glendale, and then on Thursday in Sierra Vista, and then on Friday again in Phoenix, and then Saturday in, back here in Tucson, to start to have that dialogue as well. Because I'd like to know what that means. I'd like to know what the public's definition of independence is, not only from an independent person as a voter, but also the definition of how you believe a commission that has two Republicans that were selected by, in this case, the majority leaders of the Senate and the House, and in the case of the Democrat, the minority leaders of the Senate and the House. The independent member of this commission was chosen by those four members based on the applications that were provided to us by the appellate court appointment board. That's, those are the facts, that's what we know it. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate everybody's commitment to what we're doing here. This is a hard job. We've got, this is not a sprint, this is a marathon. And I want to thank you all for hanging out with us at the beginning of the marathon. So thank you all, and good night.
Thank you all. We'll call a meeting to the close at 9:02 PM. I'd like to thank the officers who've stuck in here with us tonight. We really appreciate your help, and a special thanks to Marty.